As the premier community in Hampton Roads, James City County strives to maintain a high quality of life for all citizens through sound fiscal management and legislative actions. In an ongoing effort to increase transparency, your Board of Supervisors holds public meetings to garner citizen input before making important decisions. Here's tonight's meeting agenda.
Good evening, we'd like to call to order the James City Service Authority Board of Directors' regular meeting. Mr. Powell, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Ms. McGlinnan.
Here.
Ms. Eisenhour.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Ms. Knoll.
Here. Do we have any speaker cards, sir?
No, ma'am.
Okay, no presentations either. Tonight, consent calendar, tonight's consent calendar consists of the following items, minutes, adoptions, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Public hearings tonight, proposed amendments to the regulations governing utility service. Mr. Powell will give us a staff presentation.
Right, good evening. Staff proposes three amendments to the regulations governing utility service. The first one would add language that requires minor subdivisions required as five lots or less within the PSA to connect to JCSA infrastructure. Recently, a minor subdivision was able to avoid the requirement to connect because it was located more than 55 feet from JCSA infrastructure, as 55 feet is the new threshold under the current regulations. It was the intent of the current regulations to require all subdivisions, both major and minor, to connect, but there is a loophole, and this amendment would specifically require a minor subdivision located within 1,000 feet of JCSA infrastructure to connect. This requirement would be the same as the pre-2020 update to the regulations and would close the loophole that allowed the minor subdivision in the PSA to avoid connecting. The second amendment simply removes the requirement for replacement structures to pay connection fees. The idea behind this amendment is that once a connection fee is paid, the capacity is paid for, and therefore it is not appropriate to collect another connection fee simply because of structures being replaced. And then finally, the third amendment is an update to the hydrant meter language. It limits the amount of time that a hydrant meter can be used at one location to one month, and adds language indicating that a user is responsible for any damage as a result of use. There are two notable impacts of this change. One is that JCSA has a current customer that is perpetually using a hydrant meter as their source of water, and then the other notable impact would be some of the seasonal nurseries that have been connecting to fire hydrants. From the staff's perspective, we don't feel that these permanent or semi-permanent connections to a fire hydrant is an appropriate use of a fire hydrant, and therefore we're proposing this change to the regulations. So, staff recommends approval of the resolution, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are the person who has been using it in the nursery, are they aware of the possibility of this change?
I believe the person who's been using it permanently is, I'm not certain that the nurseries are at this point.
And how would you communicate that change?
We do have record of who they are, so we can certainly communicate with them before, we do it as soon as this is approved and make sure they have plenty of time to adjust before the spring.
Okay, thank you.
Can open the public hearing, does anybody have anything to say? Okay, close the public hearing. Look to the board for discussion.
With the adoption?
All in, call the roll.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. Knoll.
Hi. We have no board considerations tonight? Nope. Board requests and directives? None?
I just had one question if I could about the dashboard.
Yes.
Noticed a big spike in delinquencies.
Right.
Is that related to a change in the billing or anything of that nature? Or is it?
It appears to be related to the change in billing, I think particularly on the commercial side. In a lot of instances, the bills are not going to a local place for the bill to be paid, they're going, you know, to a national headquarters, and I think it's just taking some time for some of, in those situations, for them to realize what the bill is and that it's a valid bill. This big spike actually occurred last month, it did come down slightly this month, I mean it's still higher obviously than it normally would be, but it did tick down a little bit this month. Our customer service staff has been proactive in reaching out to both the commercial and the residential customers who are delinquent and making sure, you know, they understand the new bill and those sorts of things. We have not done any cutoffs yet since the new billing system went in place, part of that was because we wanted to give customers the time to adjust. The other part is that there are new state laws on the books now that prohibit disconnections when the temperature is 92 degrees or above, so really, it's basically made it difficult, if not impossible, to disconnect in the summertime. But we have sent out notices, and we do anticipate starting to do disconnections midweek next week for anyone who is delinquent, so I would expect that in a month or two that we will see some of those numbers start to come back down, I hope.
Thank you.
Just had a quick question, when we talked about moving to our own billing, I had mentioned that with HRSD you can use Venmo, which a lot of people, especially the younger generation.
Right, right.
And I don't think we're able to use it yet for JCSA.
Okay.
You can lose, you can use electronic check or credit card which carries a fee, so I was wondering if you could look into that.
I will, I will. I, okay, yes.
Thank you.
I'll look into that.
The only other question I had was the insurance claim that we had that was denied, where are we with that? I mean, are we going to be able to actually help out, or is that something that because the insurance is not covering, that JCSA is basically going to have to shoulder?
I think that is still unresolved, I believe I've informed the board that our insurance company had declined the claim from the HOA. I literally got a letter on the way over here this afternoon, the HOA has written a letter to us disputing the insurance company's decision, so I think there's still, it's still unresolved at this point.
Okay. Please keep it posted on that.
I will.
Okay, can we go on to the general manager's update?
I have no further update.
Oh, okay. So we'd like to adjourn until 5:00 PM Wednesday, November 13th for the regular meeting, may I have a motion?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Thank you.
Call this meeting of the regular meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors to order, Mr. Stevens, if you could please call the roll.
Ms. Knoll.
Present.
Ms. Knoll represents the Stonehouse District. Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. Hippel represents the Powhatan District. Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan represents the Roberts District. Mr. Eisenhour?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour represents the Jamestown District and is vice chair of the board. Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Larson represents the Berkeley District and is chair of the board. Sitting to my left is Adam Kinsman, county attorney, I'm Scott Stevens, county administrator, and it's my pleasure to be clerk of the board.
Thank you so much. I do need a motion to amend the agenda to bring board consideration item number one, plan of finance to go ahead of public hearings.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
With that, I will have Vice Chair Eisenhour introduce our pledge leader and give the instructions.
Hey, thank you. Our pledge this evening is going to be led by Charlie Schoff, it's, I guess, Schoff is how it's pronounced, they, thank you Teresa for putting the pronunciation on the sheet, helps. And Charlie attends DJ Moni U school, he's here tonight with his parents Kate and Merritt, and he has two brothers, Peter and Henry. His sports are soccer, running, swimming, taekwondo, he's in the Sharks Travel Soccer Team, Killer Wheels Summer Swim Team, and shipped Running Club. His awards, honor roll, yellow belt, and taekwondo, and he is looking to play, participate, he participated, I guess, in the 2024 Summer Camps for Skateboard Camp, Aeronautics and Drone Camp, and AG Basketball Camp, and so, that's a pretty extensive resume.
[laughing]
Wonderful, especially that skateboard, I got to go over and watch those folks at the skateboard camp, it's awesome. So, Charlie, if you would come up and give us about 10 or 15 seconds of silence, and then we'll have a pledge, and afterwards, hang on, we're going to take a picture.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would ask board members, if you want to come down here, we're going to do the presentation and get a picture.
Brings us to public comment. Our first speaker this evening is Clayton Ty. Good evening, if you should just restate your name and your address, please.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Clayton Ty, I reside in 12733 Sand Pebble Circle, Newport News, Virginia. And I'm coming before you tonight to voice my opposition to the recent announcement of the Kongsburg Missile Armament Factory, that was announced a couple weeks ago. I served in the military, in the Army, as a forward observer who called in ordinance. I served 11 years, it was a very, very lethal and very destructive job, and I've just come to learn that after that time, that, you know, selling arms and certainly shooting arms, it didn't really solve anything. I believe that diplomacy and peace should always be a priority. And I grew up on the Eastern Shore of Virginia, I would vacation here in James City County, go to Colonial Williamsburg and the Jamestown Settlement, and I always thought it reminded me, kind of like home, I was from Chingatig, and, you know, it was very quiet there, it was a little bit removed from a lot of the militarism that you see in Norfolk and Virginia Beach, and when I moved over here, I wanted to move to James City County because I wanted to be away from that, and I'm sure that a lot of people moved to James City County for that same reason, to be a little bit more removed from that hustle and bustle and some of the more unfortunate realities of life. And, you know, I just, I just think that if you have an opportunity to press back on this, I think it would serve us well, because essentially what's going to happen is, you know, not only are you bringing, not only is Kongsburg going to be exporting, or they might import it to James City County, now you're making the whole of the county a target, and people moved here to get away from that, so, I don't know. I ran the numbers, I saw it was a hundred million dollar investment to the state, and I also ran the numbers and saw there was 78,254 people counted in James City County in the 2020 census, that came out to $1,277.89 per person. I would gladly, I would gladly write a check to you guys for $1,277.89 for you to just say no. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good afternoon, thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Purse, Mr. Reinhammer, Mr. Kinsman, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Peg Borman, I reside at 17 Settlers Lane in downtown Lightfoot, and I'm here to talk trash again. As I mentioned last night, last month, we were honored, we were honored this month with, a couple of weeks ago, with 45 members from true recovery and WH, W A R recovery from originally, and they spent a couple hours cleaning up the Grove area. We got .41 tons of litter and trash that was cleaned up in our, on the several streets out there, so we thank them for this service, and they've given quite a good cleanup for our county. The commission always tries to help beautify the community also, we just closed on Good Neighbor Grant, we had 10 neighborhoods this year that received awards for these areas, and they also chose to, they have to clean up an area and trash and litter as a part of their Good Neighbor Grant, and the commission likes to educate the public against litter and promotion, promote recycling, so we took part in a, in an event at the past month, we had, we attended the Harvest Fest at the Chickahominy Riverfront property, and also we, I took part in Ford's Colony Purple Day, which was a glass recycling event. Now, coming up on the 16th of November, you all, somewhere you can pick up one of these, I've got some if you want them, but there's some more out there, I think. We have a change of the venue, I talked about it last month, the recycling expo and repair fair is now going to be held at Lafayette High School instead of War Hill, and I hope that some of you all will be able to come out and see what we're doing. We're looking for fixers as well as people needing to bring in repair things, there'll also be sewers there to mend clothing, small appliances repaired, woodworking, metal, we have a welder coming, bike repair, jewelry repairs, but pre-registration is required in order to have these things repaired because we have to have the tools and supplies. Also, you can donate things like tires, glass, or soft plastic bags and so forth, e-waste torches, old computers and so forth, food scraps for composting, that's something we got new. You can also donate shoes, clothing, building materials, household goods, and a very popular shredding truck will be there, so that's, your shredding needs will be taken care of on November the 16th at Lafayette High School, nine to one, and you can call 757-259-5375, or you can go to jamescityva.gov/3879, which is the website. You'll also find us at the Boo Bash on October the 12th, and Freedom Park on October 17th, and October the 23rd, we plan on being at Halloween for Heroes. And I have to say, we are still looking for commissioners, especially from Powhatan and Jamestown, and we always looking for volunteers to help us out on all these things, so thank you for your time, and I appreciate you all.
Thank you, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
John Rodenberg?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board of Supervisors, my name is John Rodenberg, I reside at 5325 Center Street. It is a privilege to be here this evening, I work for Versibility Resources, based in Hampton, we are a nonprofit serving people of disability throughout the region, and in fact, across the country. I am here this evening after having visited almost all of our city councils and Board of Supervisors in the region, it's been interesting, each one is very different, and the culture is unique, but I was most forward, looking forward to being with you here this evening for a variety of reasons, I love living in Williamsburg, I have the good fortune of being the neighbor of our outstanding county administrator, I would tell you that his spouse is more popular in the neighborhood than he is, but he might mute my microphone. Versibility Resources serves people of disability, we do an amazing job of serving 1,600 people every day, we have 850 employees, all the way from Norfolk to San Diego. Indeed, through our contracts with US Navy and for the US Air Force, our individuals load food onto almost every single Navy ship that goes out to sea, and at 40 US bases across the country, our individuals are able to help sort the mail. On October 24th, this month, at the Mariners Museum, we're going to have a gala fundraising event where we are going to be lifting up our mission, having distinguished individuals like yourself, mayors across the region, community leaders, philanthropists that are lifting up our mission and the work that we do to serve people with disability, so as you may have received an email earlier this week, I wanted to come and to personally invite you, please come join us on October 24th, and it is my hope as a resident of this county that you will continue to learn more about Versibility Resources, the amazing work that we do serving people with disability. Thank you for your time.
My name's Jackie Morrell, I've been a resident of Williamsburg for over 50 years, I was Junior Women's Club, Senior Women's Club, League of Women's Club, League of Women Voters, I even owned the old Frank's Truck Stop for 17 years, many of you knew that, looks like a gentleman, that was one of my customers. So, and I was a member of Temple Beth El, I was the first lady on the board of Addeth Just from Synagogue in Newport News, so I have a lot of involvement in our community. Well, I moved, I lived here 50 years, and now, and then I've moved into a small condominium after having a large home, I've downgraded, I live in Seasons Trace, it has been the worst time of my life, if you want to know the truth. I'm here because of the police department of James City County, they have been horrible to deal with. They have been horrible to deal with. They have, the first incident I had, something was missing from my home. So I called the police and Officer New came. And, and I thought it was a nice encounter. Well, then I found some other items. I found files missing from my home between me and my next door neighbor, who is an anti-Semitic person. I am of Jewish faith, as you obviously can tell, I think. And she was not happy with that. And then the subdivision that I live in, because I'm a very vocal person, they were not happy about, apparently, I don't believe, that's allegedly, don't believe. They were excited about my being so outspoken. So my files and then my baseball hats, a lot of odd little things were missing. Well, since I had such a nice encounter with Officer New, I asked for him to come back and talk to me. Officer New looked around my home and he's, and his encounter to me was, he felt I had Alzheimer's disease. He said, "You have placed your, your phone down, then you look around, you can't remember where you put it down." And then you're like, "Where did I just put that down?" I did not know. The police department has the background for mental of this, of the medical background as well as the police department. I never wanted to have any communication with him again. Well, then I have with me, I've left it over there, I have had four break-ins into my home. I have, I have recordings of them, videos of them, I would be happy to share with you. So I came home and, and so I have ADT and I have Ring on my home. Well, the Ring ADT, because I was having a problem with my pro, with my program, they said to me, "Call the police department to share with them the problem that you're having." And I did that. Well, instead, the police came, it was two vehicles, Officer T. New, and I really don't know the name of the other officer, came to my home and wanted to know everything about me. Who do I talk to every day on the phone? Who do I speak to? What do I eat? Are you on any medications? I'm like, "Are you?" I mean, this is the way they encounter me. So they left that first morning. Well, then I came home later that day and I went upstairs to my bedroom. And then my back sliding glass door had been broken into. And I called the police back, the same two officers came back. And I'm like, "Don't you want to do anything about this?" No, they went through the same situation. Well, Officer New, he obviously, and I allegedly knew I'm saying this, put in my file saying that I'm senile or I have Alzheimer's or whatever he's done. So whenever I encounter a situation, this is what they respond to. So my, my next encounter, I have pictures of young men jumping out of the condo next, the townhouse next door to me, jumping out over the fence. And no, the third, the second encounter, I have pictures of them leaving the home next to me. My three minutes are up.
Time is up, ma'am.
I can't tell you more. I have pictures.
Sorry.
The police department won't believe me. I have pictures of men breaking out of that apartment window, going over the roof into my home.
Your time is up. Thank you. Isaiah Morton?
Good afternoon, good evening now, good evening Board of Supervisors, yes. In celebration of National 4H Week, I wanted to do a brief introduction. My name is Isaiah Morton and I have the privilege of serving as the 4H Youth Development Extension Agent for James City County through Virginia Cooperative Extension. I'd like to take a moment to highlight the positive impact that I believe 4H is having on our community's youth. At its core, 4H empowers young people through hands-on learning in areas like agriculture or science, leadership and citizenship. Our members gain essential life skills that last well beyond their time in 4H, whether it's building confidence to speak in a public setting like this, or exploring college and career pathways, or developing leadership experience as club officers. So in the ten months that I've been here in James City County, I feel like I've expanded our network, strengthening existing programs and launching new ones as well. Over one hundred and thirty James City County youth, twenty teen counselors and almost about ten wonderful adults attended 4H Junior Camp 2024. We also co-hosted a day of science and engineering camp with Parks and Rec reaching about thirty campers a day, and we plan to continue to grow that partnership next summer. I also would like to recognize the revival of the Making Waves 4H Teen Leadership Club, which is focused on community service, leadership, public speaking and preparing for life outside of high school. And additionally, we are launching the Green Thumb Exploration Camp in April of 2025 to expose more youth to the benefits and importance of agriculture, agriculture. And I have recently secured a grant to deliver Health Rocks, an educational program about risk, to at least a hundred of our local youth. Looking ahead, I aim to expand the 4H program into our schools across JCC. I've already worked with Twanaw Middle School, Norwich Elementary, and I've delivered interest presentations at Lafayette, War Hill and James Blair. By partnering with our schools, we hope to integrate 4H's hands-on learning into everyday education, fostering a critical thinking and practical skills. But none of this would be possible without the support of this community. Your investment in programs like 4H allows us to reach more youth and create more meaningful experiences and build a brighter future for James City County. As we grow, we need continued support, but not just financially, but in advocating for 4H's presence across the county. We have two main delivery methods I'd like, that I'd like to focus on in my first year, and that is my community clubs and in-school enrichment. In addition to 4H, our Extension Office offers services through Family Focus, which focuses on young people between the age of zero, so birth, all the way up to five years old. Then they become 4Hers from age five up to eighteen. We also have Family Consumer Sciences that work with adults and children, especially parents. And we also have agricultural and natural resources, where they work with farmers and other sorts of providers, all working to strengthen our community. With your help, we can continue fostering a thriving environment for youth and families and all of our people. I invite each of you to visit one of our programs at some time, to get connected with our Virginia Cooperative Extension Office, and for me to attend our upcoming Discover 4H Open House on October twentieth. Meet your Clover community to see firsthand the incredible work that's happening through James City County 4H. It is a fair-style event, so you'll get some exposure to some of the different activities that we provide. We will be celebrating some of the accomplishments of some of these teens and hard workers. And yeah, it's going to be a really fun event, I hope. And it's going to be our James City County Rec Center on October twentieth, from three thirty PM to five thirty PM. If you have any questions, please contact me at the Virginia Cooperative Extension Office of James City. And thank you again for your time, your support and your commitment to investing in the next generation.
A former Blue Ribbon Biscuit winner, 4H'er, right here. Been a long time ago, haven't made those biscuits in a while, but still.
We could use some.
Thank you, yes. With that, that brings us to Board Considerations, Plan of Finance, Capital Projects, Sharon McCarthy.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors. Before you this evening is a resolution that requests the Economic Development Authority to issue lease revenue bonds in the amount of approximately seventy-five point eight million. The proceeds from these bonds would cover the cost of pre-case space, Jamestown High School cafeteria expansion, a new General Services Administration building and a new government center. The resolution was prepared by our bond council and it would authorize the sale of the bonds if the interest rates on the bonds does not exceed five percent. And it would also approve the financing documents. David Rose with Davenport, our financial advisor, is with us tonight to present a summarized plan of finance. And with that, I will turn it over to him. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board. It's nice to be back. As you all know, my partner of many years, Courtney Rogers, is not able to be here tonight, so you have the B-team. Go easy on me, please, and I'll report back. But Ben Tolbert is here. Ben is, is one of our newer folks, Virginia Tech graduate. And of course, to his right, Chris Culp, your longtime bond counsel. So again, pleasure to be back. I will be brief and thank to the staff, because we couldn't be here without them. And I'm seeing, I'm trying to turn this here, let's see. Okay, let me go a little slower. Again, thanks to Ms. McCarthy and to Mr. Stevens and their colleagues. As it was outlined here just a moment ago, we are looking to get your permission to sell slightly under seventy-six million of bonds that again, will be paid back by the county as you've done previously. To say that, I wanted to just make sure for the citizens that you have a series of policies. The county enjoys the highest possible credit ratings from all three credit rating agencies. And there's a reason for that. And you'll see that, in part because your self-imposed policies that are here up on the screen, you not only meet them, you exceed them. And you've done that for a period of time now. And in fact, you're further improving on those policies as we speak. So again, from an overall standpoint, the county is in excellent shape. You run sustainably balanced budgets and you're very careful with your monies. You also, at that fourth bullet there, third bullet, excuse me, have a series of other policies and fund balances that have kept you in good stead. And having been working with you now for some thirty-plus years, you've been able to weather difficult times because of the way you've approached this. Having said that, the unassigned fund balance, for those of you in the audience perhaps think of this as your rainy day fund, you are well in excess of your policy target, which at one time was ten percent, moved to twelve percent, and you have a range up to fifteen percent. And you can see well beyond that, north of twenty-five percent. So again, all of that is critical to allowing the county to borrow at the lowest possible interest rates, which in turn allows you to put the least amount of pressure on the general fund and the taxes of the citizens. And I think the other important thing here is with those dollars that sit in those fund balances, you're able to actually earn an interest rate on that that further helps the general fund and actually earns an interest rate higher than the cost of the money that we're about to borrow. And that's important too. So always around, the county is doing those things that you would see in best practices. Just to give you a sense of how we compare to the other AAA counties throughout the Commonwealth, from a fund balance, we are slightly above in just the sheer dollars. But when you adjust for the size of our budget, we are literally right there at the very top, one below the very top in terms of our fund balances available as a percentage of our expenditures. An excellent position to be in, I'm proud to see you there. And that's come through the hard work and the leadership of y'all right in front of me. So with that said, some of the observations, I won't belabor this other than to say, there is some talk, working with your staff, about trying to take some of that excess and think about using that towards some capital projects, one-time purposes. That's a work in progress and I would defer to, to Ms. McCarthy and to Mr. Stevens. But again, we can't be in this position if we're not doing well. And that's important. And we keep thinking about ways to further strengthen our overall situation. So that leads into the Plan of Finance here for the 2024 year. Just wanted to show you where interest rates are. If you go back to roughly two thousand thereabouts, so over the last twenty-three, twenty-four years, rates are favorable. The right-hand side, you go back over since January of twenty-third, twenty-three, basically, over the last, if you would, you know, sort of like twenty months or so, again, we're hanging in there, very, very solid. If you look back to where, when we first started with you, back into, into the nineties and the late eighties, rates were considerably higher. So we really are in a very favorable environment to look at borrowing on a fixed rate basis. So this just shows you a recent bond sale that we did. I would call your eyes to the right-hand side here where I've sort of scrolled around it. That was a traditional twenty-year revenue bond, the likes of which we're talking about here as lease revenue bonds. And again, that all-in cost of money was below three point seven five percent. Fixed rate with the ability to call it at our discretion, our, meaning the county's, in the decade, if we want to. And again, that is considerably below that five percent not to exceed that we're having in the various resolutions. I would point out, and we'll show you a little bit in the schedule, this will be done on what we call a competitive basis, which means that any and all bona fide financing institutions can bid on your bonds at the day of the sale. That way, we're assured that we're getting the best possible pricing because we're solely awarding it to the lowest all-in cost of money. And that's how we've done it previously. We're going to plan to do it this way with your blessing. Couple of things here. Let me just show you, I think sometimes it's helpful to see graphically what your debt portfolio looks like. You have roughly, in this case, about seventy-five million of principal outstanding. And you'll notice it looks like a very downward sloping schedule, and indeed it is. And one of the things I'm proud of, having worked with you now for about thirty years, is that we pay our debts off quickly. So let me just give you a sense of this. We have what's called a ten-year payout policy, meaning we look to pay off fifty percent of the principal in ten years. We're really closer to ninety percent right now. For those in the audience, the way to think about this, if you're fortunate to have a mortgage that's out at thirty years, after ten years, the average mortgage pays off twenty-five percent of the principal, you're at ninety percent. So we are in a very strong position. It allows us to layer in new debt in a multi-year program without, in effect, blowing up our budgets and things of that nature. So it's coming to this from a position of strength. So, it's a little hard to move, okay. Again, we think right now, when we add roughly one quarter of a percent, we're going to be looking at something, again, south of four percent. Again, that's fixed rate. I think we all agree, we're not in the risk-taking business. While rates are good, we lock it in. We've been here before. If rates get better in a material way, we'd love to come back and say, "We're here to refinance solely to save money, not to extend any debt," but just to simply, and we've done that many times with you all over the years. Okay, this is the debt service, existing, new debt service estimate, total debt service to the right. This is basically your overall debt service fund. Time's a little short tonight with what you have, but let me say, you not only have this unassigned fund balance, but you also have a debt service fund. And the way that you've operated this for many years, I'm proud to say we were part of this creation years ago, was that you put dollars in there, you have a forecast for future revenues that go in to either the county part, the schools part, and then we have the expenditures, which is the existing debt service, coupled with the new debt service. And you'll notice there in the middle, not only do we have this new debt service in 2024, but we've also factored in three additional borrowings over the next basically five or six years. Because when we do all this with you, as you know, thanks to the staff and how they work, we're thinking multiple years, not just one year at a time. And so that said, we not only have programmed the twenty-four, but we have some dollars of about a hundred million in twenty-six. We have about, I think, let me go, I think it's about thirty to fifty million in twenty-eight, maybe a little less than that, and another fifty to seventy-five or so in twenty-nine. So all told, for the moment, we've already factored in almost a hundred and eighty or so million dollars to the end of the decade. Doesn't mean we have to do that, doesn't mean that we won't have some other dollars to counteract some of the debt. But I want to show you how it looks when we factor that in. And what you'll see here is you've got several self- And what you'll see here is you've got several self-imposed policies. Debt to assessed value, that simply means how much of that principal relative to the assessed value, the taxable assessed value, the county. We don't like to go above 3%. What we've used here is the dark green is where you stand right now. The light green is with that issue that we're talking about, that roughly 75 million. And then the brown is those other three issues layered in. And you can see that even when we do all of that, we're still literally halfway to our policy, which is a very good, strong position to be in. Give me one second. So again, we like where we are there on that policy, and the rating agencies like where we are. Then the next one is, I really think, the critical policy. And that is our credit card. Said another way, we try not to go past 10 cents on every dollar into debt service. Again, you think about it, if you're fortunate to have a mortgage, banks don't like you to be above 25, 26% of your income, if you would, monthly towards a mortgage. We have a policy not to go beyond 10%. It can go upwards as high as 12%. Over the years, being with you, one of the biggest impediments we had years ago to being AAA was we had debt services high as 15 or 16% way back in the old days. Today, we're way under that. And even when we add in all of that debt, we're still going to be considerably below that 10%. So again, we've got the cushion. If some things happen that don't go the way we want, we're still well under our policy. And that's the way we'd like to see us continue for the long run. Okay. Payout ratio, that's where we are, which is where you want to be. This is where you could be here. So again, once again, hopefully the picture's worth 1,000 words. I could say a lot less. We're in good shape. We remain in good shape. So lastly, wrapping up here, tonight, we're asking you to approve the financing documents Ms. McCarthy talked about. Any questions you might have? Chris Culp could answer those. We will require the Economic Development Authority to approve those documents next week on the 15th. One of us will be there for that. We will be in talking with the rating agencies the week of the 28th, early in the week of the 28th. Get the ratings back about a week later. Then we call posting out to the world with what we expect to be the AAA ratings. No guarantee, but we expect it to be in that range. And then we will look to sell on or about the 13th. I always say that the plan date is the 13th. But if something happens that moves it or some circumstances beyond our control, we can move that around a little bit. And then finally, we would close on that early in December, as you can see. With that, Madam Chair and any members, I'm happy to answer any questions and appreciate the opportunity to be here again.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for the staff or the bond counsel?
Seems like a very prudent plan. And good that we're, our policies are working so well.
And I thank you because I think it's not only helpful for us but for the audience to see graphically. Because that puts it in context of what we're trying to maintain here. And so we've got a lot that we need to be doing, and we have the ability to do it. And this is the first step, so.
Sure.
Is there a motion?
Do we approve the plan?
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Who cares?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Sharon, as well, for your leadership. All right. That brings us to public hearings. Oops, wait a minute. No, we didn't have anything on, okay, never mind. Public hearings. Our PC representative this evening is Scott May. Our first public hearing is one, it's number one, is Z230001, SUP230031, Monticello Avenue Shops. Ben Lopacker to give the staff presentation. Hello.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Tim Trant of Kaufman and Canoles, on behalf of Mr. Brett Skinner of Verdade Real Estate Development, has applied for, or has submitted an application for rezoning and a commercial special use permit for the development of three properties located at 4744 Old News Road, 3897, and 3905 Ironbound Road. The three parcels are currently zoned R8 Rural Residential and are designated neighborhood commercial on the 2045 Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map. This proposal is to rezone 2.75 acres from R8 Rural Residential to B1 General Business with proffers. The commercial special use permit is to permit more than 10,000 square feet of commercial development. The master plan proposes three 4,000-square-foot buildings fronting Monticello Avenue with shared parking. The applicant has indicated that there is no specific commercial or office user at this point in time. The proposed site would take access from the existing right-in, right-out intersection located between the project area and the existing Monticello Marketplace shops. The proposed site is located along the Monticello Community Character Corridor and is within the Newtown Community Character Area. The applicant has provided proffered design guidelines to ensure consistency with the character of this area. Staff finds this proposal to be compatible with surrounding development and consistent with the 2045 Comprehensive Plan and zoning ordinance. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve this application subject to the proposed proffers and SUP conditions. And at its August 7, 2024, regular meeting, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of this application by a vote of 6 to 0. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have for staff. And the applicant is also available. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions at this point?
Yep. After the Planning Commission meeting, I think there was a discussion of the requirement for a sidewalk on both sides of Ironbound Road over there. And the concern of the citizens was that one on that side closest to Monticello would eat into the vegetated buffer. That appears in this thing to have been removed. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That was the change that was made to the application since the September board meeting where this was deferred. Ultimately, staff's interpretation is that the zoning ordinance requires a sidewalk along Ironbound Road. However, the applicant booked to potentially appeal that upon the submittal of a site plan. By not including that on this master plan, it would provide them with the opportunity to appeal this to the Development Review Committee.
Evening, Madam Chair and other distinguished members of the board. I'm Scott May, Planning Commissioner for the Powhatan District. I'm a relatively new planning commissioner, so this is my first time in front of you guys. So I will try to be brief. The Planning Commission voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval of this application. Discussion ensued citing traffic and stormwater concerns, among others. However, the commission felt this was a reasonable use of the property based on the current level of development in that area and agreed with county staff's recommendation to approve this application. Can I answer any other questions you may have on that?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. May? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our speaker this evening, by the way, our public hearing is already open since we have deferred this case from our September regular meeting. We have a speaker this evening, Tim Trant. Evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Tim Trant. I'm attorney with the law firm of Kaufman and Canoles. Office is at 41801 Courthouse Street here in James City County. It's my privilege to be with you tonight. It's also my privilege to be here representing Verdade. Just to introduce the team members and the audience. First and foremost, the Cook and Erdl families are the owners of the property. We're just representing the contract purchaser of Verdade Real Estate. I do believe members of the Erdl family are here this evening and probably will want to offer some comments to you. Ross Claiborne with Verdade Real Estate is here as well. Jason Grimes, our civil engineer. Grove Slade was our transportation engineer. And then John Hopkey with Hopkey Harrison did the design guidelines. Be brief and try not to be redundant of anything. Mr. Lopacker has already shared with you, who's, by the way, been a pleasure to work with through this process. Just show you these slides so if we need to come back to him to address questions. Just to elaborate a little bit on some of the details of the project. The applicant, as you know, worked with quite a few, really showed some unique flexibility in willing, in their ability and willingness to constrain the uses on the site and the ways they would constrain it in more than one way. Not just the proffered limitations on the limiting, the specific use categories. They did that, but then further, to sort of be a further check on that because of the uncertainty of their ultimate tenants, also through a trip generation limitation. So that it really did secure and ensure a very low-intensity use. And then just proffered design guidelines to ensure the aesthetics are in keeping with the attractive character along Monticello Avenue. The last thing I will mention is, before I sort of conclude and open it up for questions, is we did host a community meeting at Legacy Hall. We had the privilege of meeting two of our residential neighbors, Mr. Sasaki, just to the east, and I believe the Zumburn family, who is located right on this corner. They were very pleasant, obviously concerned about a change in the circumstances on that property. They both were longtime residents and knew the Erdl family sort of generationally, which was neat. Their main concern, as Mr. Eisenhour mentioned, who was kind to attend that meeting, was the sidewalk that we had previously shown along Ironbound Road in response to the position that a sidewalk is required on that side of the street. There is, as the residents pointed out already, a sidewalk on the east side of Ironbound Road in this location. We do believe, no disrespect to staff, that that meets the ordinance requirements and that a sidewalk would not be required also on our side of the street. We're happy to put it in, but because of the residents' concerns for the impact that would correctly have to the buffer area, we have pulled it off the master plan and intend to pursue the request for a waiver from the DRC through the site plan process. You've all seen the elevations and whatnot through the packet. And briefly, just, I know you all are quite familiar with the area, but our design intent for the buffering, which is the principal concern of our neighbors expressed at the public hearing, is to replicate or do a potentially even better job of buffering comparable to the Nussbaum Center just beside us, which is a really well-buffered rear of house, as I'll show you in a moment. For those of you who've been on that stretch of Ironbound Road, it is fairly well-buffered. So this photograph is taken from the intersection of Milton Road and Ironbound Road looking southwest. As you can see, this is the old Ironbound Road right-of-way. And as you can see, there's a fairly nice buffer of mature trees. And then I went a little further down somewhere in generally halfway point in this vicinity, did another direct shot on Google Earth. And as you can see, it really does offer quite an effective screen. So just, and that's another picture of it, too, looking northwest. This is a picture of the existing buffer along our property. So as you can see, we have quite a substantial stand of existing trees, which in accordance with our land plan, as you can see, will be maintained and provide a good screen for residents. So just to conclude, consistent with the county's comprehensive plan, resolves a lot of uncertainty, which we've all experienced around what might happen on this property. Pretty extensive development control and enhancement to the county's tax base. With that, I'll conclude my remarks and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Questions for Ms.?
I didn't know, do you want to have questions now or after the other, any other speakers?
That was the only speaker card that I had for this evening.
Well, then I just will ask a question about this. So I think my biggest concern about the proposal previously was the location of the exit onto Monticello Avenue in a place where I thought it would just kind of further complicate an already confusing collection of traffic movements. So now it's been moved down. But I just wonder about have any discussions that have taken place with the adjacent shopping center? Because I suspect that there will be people who will want to turn left. And the way to do that, obviously, is going to be to go through their parking lot and out to the signalized intersection.
Oh, good question, Mr. McGlinnan. I probably should have addressed that in my remarks. Forgive me, my interest in brevity, my interest in brevity, I didn't, I cut off what is an important component of the project. So just, so our access point, as you all know, is really opposite Old News Road. No cross, that intersection is right-in, or that access point is right-in, right-out only. You can't get across Monticello Avenue, at least not legally, in that location. And probably only in the middle of the night, maybe, even if you were willing to break the law. Fair enough. So it's right-in, right-out only. To support that movement, we are required to, or it was recommended, and we're committed to construct, in accordance with our traffic impact analysis, a right-turn lane into the site. The, it isn't owned by Nussbaum particularly, but the Nussbaum family Business Enterprise does own and control this center. We have been in communication with them. And they did express some real concern about our initial concept for the project, which did not in any way attempt to restrict cross-traffic. We have no easement to access their site, but we had not taken any action to prohibit that movement. And they were concerned about that, understandably so, that that would mean our customers might try to back up or could potentially create traffic concerns on their site for really no benefit to their property. And so we acknowledged that was true and that we should take steps to prohibit that. And so what we have done, and Mr. Grimes can explain in more detail if you need, and I don't have the ability to zoom, forgive me, but what we have done is put in, or proffered on our master, consistent with our master plan, some curbing that would discourage that cut-through traffic. So you would be able to enter our site and then enter a channelized access point to come in. And then when you exit our site, there's going to be a curbing that extends out that would really block your ability to turn left. Now, somebody, you know, getting aggressive certainly could jump the curb if that's going to be a reaction. We can't, you know, 100, we can't guarantee that there will be no cut-through traffic, but it will be a prohibitive movement and signed that way. And we, so we, the proposed uses on this property are intended to be complementary, not competitive. Professional office is really the desired tenancy for this. Medical office, dental office, potentially a veterinary office, that's the desired facility. Standalone retail is a preserve possibility just because we want, we don't want to have a vacancy. And if we can get a standalone retail user, that would be a desirable tenant. But the idea is low-traffic generating uses, folks that would be coming throughout the course of the day, not at peak commuting hours, and be able to be satisfied with a right-in, right-out access only.
So the only way that somebody could go to the left would be to approach one of the intersections and make a turn at that point?
Correct. So if somebody wanted to...
Cutting across a couple of lanes of traffic.
If somebody wanted to proceed west on Monticello Avenue, they would exit our site. They would enter presumably this right turn, this lane, the right travel lane, eastbound on Monticello, and then would have to find a way. At that point, they, you know, I don't know that this would be a merge movement that they could accomplish. But certainly, if there weren't traffic, they could merge and potentially do a U-turn here. There are a number of other movements where that left turn could happen further up. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. All right. With that, I will look to the board, let me close the public hearing, and I will look to the board for discussion and/or a motion.
Motion for approval?
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. McGlin...
Oh, sorry. Thank you. So do I need two motions?
One motion, just to make sure that we're doing both of them.
Okay. Can we vote at the same time, or you want to separate them? Okay. So...
Motion for both?
Can we have a little bit of discussion before we?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes. Yes. Oh, yes, yes, sorry.
I do want to compliment Mr. Trent and your folks who have brought us something that is infinitely better than it was before. And I think it has done a lot to limit some of the concerns that a lot of our constituents had. There are two things that I would bring up that I would like to remind folks, is that way back during the comprehensive plan, when this was being considered, there was a motion to return this, since it is zoned R8, to return it back to low-density residential, and that was defeated three to two. So it was left as business. So there is an expectation on the part of the owners of the property that they'll get to develop that as that way. I would much rather have seen it left as residential personally. I would, I would love to have seen the county buy it, because I think it would have been a perfect opportunity to put some affordable housing accessible from Ironbound Road on the back without creating the traffic issues that we have. The concerns I still have a little bit about it are traffic. We take a look at, it's considerably less than what it would have been otherwise, but when you look at the traffic impact study, what it does is it takes where we are, and it figures what this would add to it, and that's what we look at. And what it doesn't consider is it doesn't consider all the things that have been approved that haven't been built yet. So there are a lot of other impacts out there that I believe our model in the comp plan does address, but that our process for administrative or legislative cases does not. So I still have some concerns about the traffic impact on it. But again, I, the board sees fit to move forward with this. I think it's better than we've had before in the past, but I just still have some reservations on it.
I'm sorry, I cut you off for the discussion, didn't mean to do that.
And well, and I'll just say that I think I supported that same motion that Mr. Eisenhower suggested about returning this to limited residential, but there doesn't seem to be an appetite for that on the board. And I think we're kind of in a position where we've sent a signal that this is appropriate for commercial development. They've resolved the major issue that I had concern about, which was just that it was going to be a bad place for traffic movements. And, you know, I guess I, I think it's still a challenging site for the developer to deal with, but, you know, that's their choice, just in terms of figuring out how people can get in and out of that site. But given those circumstances, if there's no interest in moving back to limited residential, I'll support this proposal.
Thank you. All right, so we need a vote for the ordinance. We have the motion, so now if you could call the roll on the ordinance.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
No.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now we need a vote on the resolution.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
No.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to SUP 240008, 135 Country Club Drive, two-family unit. Terry Costello to give staff presentation. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Mr. Benny Zhang of Kaufman and Cunnels has applied on behalf of Ms. Rita Rooney for a special use permit to allow for a two-family dwelling at 135 Country Club Drive. The property is zoned R2 general residential and is designated low-density residential on the comprehensive plan and land use map and is located inside the primary service area. The property is served by public water and private sewer. The three-bedroom residence is approximately 2,557 square feet. The second dwelling is approximately 648 square feet, bringing the total square footage to 3,205. A building permit was issued in September of 2022 for an attached accessory apartment. At that time, the proposal met all the criteria set forth in section 24-32A of the zoning ordinance for attached accessory apartments. During an inspection in April of 2023, it was noted that the screening for the stairs was not installed as shown in the approved building plans. Staff then initiated conversations with the owner and the builder, which then resulted in a request to change the plans to allow the addition to remain as-is without the screening. Staff determined that the appearance as-is was not that of a single-family residence and would be considered a two-family dwelling. Section 24-260 of the zoning ordinance states the special provisions for two-family dwellings. It meets three out of the four criteria, except the one being the connection to public sewer. The Board of Supervisors may grant a waiver from the public sewer connection if the lot was legally in existence before the date of the adoption of this section of the ordinance. The Virginia Department of Health has approved the application, and the property is in the PSA and JCSA has approved the application. All these criteria have been met. With the proposed conditions, staff finds this proposal to be compatible with surrounding development and consistent with the 2045 comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. Staff recommends approval of this application, subject to the proposed conditions. Staff also recommends approval of the waiver to connect to public sewer. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicants are also available. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Question for you. Trying to understand the ramifications of this on a broader scale. This is all a neighborhood that's virtually all, I think, single-family homes. I'm not sure exactly what, didn't look at and see exactly what the zoning was, but.
It's zoned R2.
R2, okay. So do we have, and I believe, I believe there are, but do you know offhand, are there any other accessory dwelling units or accessory apartments in this neighborhood?
Staff is not aware of any accessory units in the neighborhood.
So you don't know for sure whether there are any other, okay. So then my question becomes, in this, what is it in this zoning that the, is R2, if I had an R2 lot, I couldn't put a duplex on it without an SUP, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this, so that's basically something that would, that would require an SUP regardless of who wanted to do it?
Yes.
Okay, all right, you've answered that, you've answered my question. That was, I was just sort of curious as to how we got to the SUP part of the process and, you know, what the ordinance required and everything. So, thank you.
Any other questions right now for staff? Okay, thank you. Mr. May?
Evening again, Madam Chair and other members of the board. There were two votes for this item at our meeting. The commission voted first six to one to recommend approval of SUP-24-0008. Then in a second vote, the planning commission voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the waiver to connect the residence to public sewer. County staff found this application to be compatible with surrounding development and consistent with the 2045 comprehensive plan, and the planning commission agreed with the county staff's recommendation to approve this application.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. May?
Thank you.
Thank you. Open the public hearing. Our first speaker this evening is Benny Zhang. It's my understanding you will share your time with the applicant?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yep.
Good evening.
Evening.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Benny Zhang. I'm an attorney with, or just a country lawyer over at the James City County branch, Kaufman and Cunnels, at 4801 Courthouse Street in Newtown. It's my pleasure here to be here today to represent a special client, one that typically you see us up here presenting on behalf of a commercial or national developer. Here, we get to talk about a longtime resident, Ms. Rita Rooney. She is here today with her adult-aged daughter and some of her neighbors, and Ms. Barbara Miller, who has been a longtime retired employee of the county. She sent an email to you all earlier this morning. She's in attendance in the audience as well. I'm excited to tell the story of this special use permit application, because I think it was, especially in my experience having served in local government, one of the unique cases where the applicant and staff worked so well together to engineer and problem-solve a solution for my client, the property owner's desires to keep the screen walls outside of the staircase in what was the original application. And I think it'd be important to kind of give a little bit more color and story about why we're here today. Ms. Rita Rooney and her late husband, Joe, were longtime residents having lived in Forts Colony. At certain point, they both retired and decided that it was right to downsize, which a lot of residents you'll find do in this county. Of course, they only went a block away outside of Forts Colony and decided to settle in West Williamsburg, and they built their beautiful house on the lot. Joe, unfortunately and unexpectedly, passed away when he was submitted to the hospital. As any family that unconditionally loves each other do, their adult-aged daughter, Ms. Lisa here today, rushed, got her dog, picked up her dog, and they went right into the house to stay with their mother, who understandably, Ms. Rooney was distressed at the time. Unfortunately, Joe passed, and the daughter continued to reside at the residence along with her dog, with Ms. Rooney. And it came, conversations came about where the daughter had decided that it was fitting for her to stay in the house. And so naturally, the applicant hired a builder who initiated conversations with the county. And as anyone would imagine, the builder probably recommended the least, most cost-effective way to go about with this, which was fitting with an accessory dwelling unit request. It didn't have to engender a legislative entitlement hearing with a special use permit that we are here today, that we ended up being here. That was probably, at that time, the recommendation of the builder. Now, building permit was secured. We had received, they had started constructing on the property, and at a certain point, of course, the staircase was constructed. Ms. Rooney went back to the plans. She saw what she saw. Her neighbors had given some feedback as well of what they saw, and they liked what they saw. And Ms. Rooney, for various reasons, you know, with the original plan putting two front doors from the public-facing street, and also for various safety concerns, of course, her late husband served admirably in the Secret Service, was concerned about enclosing the space. Hence, therefore, we had engendered those conversations. I got involved, and the zoning administrator provided several options. There were two options. One was to proceed with appealing the interpretation of the zoning administrator's decision to the Board of Zoning Appeals, which this body knows very well, follows a way different standard. It's more of a judicial approach. You have to do statutory interpretation of the zoning administrator's decision. In contrast, with the special use permit, which was suggested by the zoning administrator, thank goodness, and many props again to her for problem engineering, you know, a solution to this, it's, as you all well are aware, is legislative process. We go before two bodies. We have opportunities to hear from the citizens to determine whether the factors of a special use permit fit, the compatibility of the comp plan, about the character and the, of the neighborhood, get an opportunity for neighbors to be able to opine on whether they like or dislike the project. Unfortunately, here, we have no opposition. In fact, all of her neighbors, several here who join us tonight, are in support of it. Madam Chair and members of the Board of Supervisors, this is a unique situation where we were able to explore the special use permit process. Of course, with the strong urging of staff, we went through the conceptual review process, which is not something that's mandatory all the time, but as the zoning administrator in her infinite wisdom had mentioned, just because we can go through this route doesn't mean it's a viable situation. And SUP, as everyone knows, this body, is one that's decided on a case-by-case basis. So what staff did was that they analyzed whether the lot size, the area, fit with the proposal and to ask what any traffic impact there might be, any character issues, whether it's compatible with the comp plan, safety issues, water, sewer, whether the drain field was large enough to handle the additional sewage. And we're pleased to present, Madam Chair and members of the board, that it fit all the criteria. In fact, I truly believe that if this application were standalone, you know, move away with the, never mind the original application with the accessory dwelling unit, I think we would comfortably say that we would meet most of, if not all of, the criteria that's presented before you all today. But I think it's also the product of, again, what I think is an exemplary instance where county staff and the property owner was able to come together to find a solution with it. Of course, if none of those criterias met with the SUP, then we're dealt with different options, but that's not why we're here today. We're fortunate enough that we're able to pivot to truly what my client believes to be more architecturally pleasing for her own property, but also for the safety of her daughter with the additional unit as well. Like I mentioned, she had received, you all would have received seven letters of support from neighbors, three of whom are the adjacent property owners that's noted in your staff report in the packet. One thing that I think would mitigate this compared to other duplex or two-family dwelling requests is the fact that we went through this process, right? The accessory dwelling unit requirements have certain percentages of how large the floor plan may be, and we're pleased that staff, in its wisdom, because we're thinking about the future, had proposed as one of its conditions to cap the total area of the density. So it was built and approved originally at 648 square feet. We're pleased to present and concur with staff's recommendation that, and it's condition number four in your resolution, to cap this at a total area of 650. So what that means is that if some future owner, or even Ms. Rooney herself, desired to come back and wanted to expand or enlarge the unit, she would have to come before this board again. Simply put, she is just trying to find a way, at the heart of the deal, of this whole matter, to find a way to accommodate having her daughter being able to live. And if you get to know Ms. Rooney, and she'll be here tonight, because she wanted to introduce herself to you all, and you get a kind of a sense of who she is, she'll tell you that she unconditionally loves her daughter, but if she had to be in the same exact living quarters every single day, 24/7, she's going to kill, they're going to kill each other. And so this proposal, we think, meets all the criterias of a special use permit. It's compatible with the comp plan. We concur with staff's recommendation that it does not really affect the character. In fact, we think it enhances the character of the neighborhood. There's been a lot of comments you've received in your board packet where, you know, with the original design, screening the wall, it would kind of give it a boxy look. I heard one comment about it looking like an elevator shaft if you had to put some of the screen walls off. Some thought that having two front doors kind of gave the appearance of additional apartment units rather than that single-family character. And again, we're not disputing with all, you know, respectfully to staff on the appearance of the single-family dwelling. We're able to afford this conversation and to be here tonight, because this is one of those special use permit instances where you all get to determine, you are afforded greater flexibility than we would in a judicial review process to consider all of these impacts. We believe that we've effectively mitigated most of the impacts that we would think in the future, as in the current as well. And finally, I just wanted to say, just to provide as a closing remark, having been on the dais before, we certainly appreciate the concerns and the careful consideration that this board has given to this request. Every SUP is decided by case-by-case basis. It's not necessarily presidential, but it's one that comes before this body, and it's adjudged by its own merits. At the heart of this, if Ms. Rooney didn't care, she would have just built the wall. This is something she's invested a lot of resources, a lot of time, and she firmly believes that leaving this unenclosed enhances the character of what she wants for her house. It has, it's got the unanimous support of her neighborhood, and it's one that she believes firmly, from an architectural standpoint, from a rendering standpoint, and also just, it's pleasing to the eye aesthetically. You'll hear this from her adjacent property owner, neighbors, that will say to this, that have to live by and drive by this every single day. So with that, I'd like to invite Ms. Rooney up, and she'd like to give some remarks. Be happy to answer any questions afterwards.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Rita Rooney, and I reside at 135 Country Club Drive and have lived in James City County for over 24 years. I have served on the Williamsburg-James City County School- I have served on the Williamsburg-James City County School Board in the Finance Department for 13 years and was very proud to serve as Risk Manager, proudly saving the division quite a bit of money over the years to, in insurance claims, negotiations, et cetera. After the damage from our 2011 earthquake, I was assigned to be the FEMA liaison. And after much negotiations with FEMA, was able to procure almost 150% more funding from FEMA than they originally offered. This money allowed the school division to make all repairs, major and minor, to all the schools that received damage. Everything I did in my position was to enhance our division, such as implementing the division-wide recycle program and sending safety tips to employees to keep on-the-job and personal injuries to a minimum. Since my retirement, I have worked for two small businesses in the county and devote the same energy to helping them navigate business issues. I also volunteer for a local charitable organization, which assists both local and national charities. With all this being said, I just want to state that I believe in doing what is right and helping others. I am requesting that a wall not be built. Everyone that has seen the existing structure has given positive compliments. A solid wall with a second front door would produce an urban-type appearance, and the access to the backside of the wall could create a security issue, since anyone can access from that backside. The builder and I kept going back and forth about how to construct the wall and how it would look. And I truly believe that it will detract from the appearance of the home, as two front doors, along with a garage door, will definitely give an appearance of two units. Many neighbors have stopped to say how much they love the new house. One even told me that they liked the house even better than before, that it looked more complete. Several people thought it was a media room. One neighbor thought it was just a deck somewhere to sit and enjoy sun and a cup of coffee. None of them, believe it or not, realized that it was an actual living area, maybe because the footprint of the house didn't change, I don't know. A few friends have driven by, and they drive into the first part of my circular driveway and asked me where the addition was, because they could not see it from that vantage point. Also, with Country Club Drive being a dead-end street, traffic is minimal, therefore exposure to the view is very low. The builder purchased the door for the wall, along with all the other construction supplies, and that door is still sitting in my garage. So it is definitely something that we were doing, going to do. But we could not come up with a design that would not make it look really boxy and that would be aesthetically pleasing. Anything we came up with detracted from the pleasant appearance of the home and of my neighborhood. Senior Planner Terry Costello came out to my house earlier in the summer, and we had a pleasant visit while she photographed my property, and I truly appreciate her assistance with guiding this application from the staff's end. My husband and I built this downsized home to age and place in 2017. It has one-level living, no thresholds, levers instead of doorknobs, extra wide doors, and handicap grab bars in place of towel racks. So I do not plan to move. I have been told that I'm a bit OCD, and everything needs to be clean, lined up, and in order. And I honestly believe that a wall would distract from that attractive front elevation of my home. I respectfully ask that you please support my request. Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions, Madam Chair.
Yeah, are there any questions for Ms.?
I had some for the applicant, please.
Ms. Rooney?
Yes. A lot of times we, can you explain, I think I gathered some of how we got to where we are? And it sounds like the design of the wall and that's why, because the wall was on the plans evidently from the start, that was submitted to the county.
Right.
And then, you know, because sometimes we end up with, people don't want to do something, so they're like, well, let me find another way. And I don't want to put a wall up, I don't want to do this. How did, how did the not building the wall the same time you're building, what kind of went on in that process? I can get in your mind and know you're not trying to pull one over on, I don't, I'm just trying to be honest. And I'm straightforward, so, you know.
We just kept not, the plans, it just showed so boxy, and I would go back and say, okay, can we put a window in there? And they said, no, because it'll show the stairs. And originally, we had talked, they had asked me to put the stairs in the garage going up, but the fire department wouldn't allow that, because you've got a unit going into another unit, like if there was a fire. We just kept talking about it and talking about it, and he's, the builder was wonderful, very fair, and he just, it just kept, it just would look like a big box in the front of a house. And if I was looking at that, you know, if I was my neighbor across the street, it would just look, I don't know, I just, like, just urban, I couldn't figure it out. And like I said, the door is still sitting in my garage. I mean, he ordered it, we were going to do it, we just kept going back and forth the whole time. He did do the construction quickly. I mean, some builders, you know, when I was talking to them, said it'd be like six, eight months, and he had it all done completely in like three months. But, so it was a fast process, and I just said, I just, you know, they wanted the front side and then the backside, and I just kept thinking, you know, my husband would kill me if I did something like that to our daughter, because anybody could just walk in the back and just hide in that corner, you know, the front corner, and she could, she would walk in through the door. And I just, I mean, the security part of it, and then when we have these bad storms, I could see a wind tunnel coming in there. And then this box that just had a door, and I was standing back going, that's a door, a garage door, and a door, that, that would, that would tell everybody it was a two-unit place. And I just, we just get so confused.
Now, when you're, how come in the process, have you all discussed this, the builder didn't go, let me go back to the county and say, hey, is there something we can adjust? Is there something, was there any point of any time that?
Well, the architect, the architect, yeah, we would, we would go back and forth, but it was, he couldn't even figure out how to build, you know, to do it.
Because it, you know, it gives the appearance, and I'm going to be totally honest, it gives the appearance of, we finished it, we built it, and we got it all done, and then basically the county came out and said, wait a minute, you're not finished, there's supposed to be a wall here. Is that what I'm hearing, is that, you know?
At the start, I wasn't involved till in the middle of the process. And the reason why I say that, just seeing experiences with various builders around town, I think, again, they probably frankly did not know that was even an option. They didn't know that probably the special use permit, having a two-family dwelling, was a viable option at the time. So, no, I see the situation that we're in, you know, fortunately, I think, after going through the conceptual plan, Land Use Council being involved, kind of informing that process with it, yes, it does create a situation where what you're seeing is, it had already been constructed with the building permit, but I think it would have been fair to say that if had, had it been an option that came up with the right advice and guidance, perhaps maybe today, rather than it being, hey, it's been constructed now and we're seeking the SUP, maybe we would have just done the SUP to begin with, just based on how the plans had turned out.
Another right-to-the-point question, because we get, sometimes we get people up here that will tell us, I didn't know, I didn't understand, you know, and technically they knew.
Okay.
You know, and they were just trying to, well, I'm going to do this, and then I'm going to try later to get over the board and over the county and all that. I'm going to ask you one-on-one, was that your intent as this process went on?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, and I just, I just need to know that, so I know, you know, and I take you for your word, and, because that's all we have at the end of the day, is our word. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't something that you were trying to go, okay, I'm not going to put that wall up, I don't like the way it looks, I'm just not going to do it, if they catch me, they catch me.
Oh, yeah, no, no, because there's final approvals and everything, and we just, you know, like I said, everything was either safety or weather issue, or, you know, like it would be torn down. You know, we even talked about trellis work, and they said, no, that that wasn't, you know, viable, or plantings, or whatever. But we just kept, I don't know, we kept going, you know, through, and we just weren't coming up, he and I, we couldn't come up with something that was going to look good and add to the house without it decreasing, I mean, the, I don't know, the value, that's not the right word to use, but decreasing the appearance, the, you know, I'm not.
Thank you, I appreciate your honesty.
Okay.
Thank you. I've got a question, Terry, for staff, if I may. So, we're okay with not having the wall now? But originally, we wanted the wall. And so, is it because the wall came with the plans originally when they were approved? And since the plans came in with a wall, that's what we need to have? Or, see, I'm kind of caught in the middle of, and I know you all are trying to work, you all, and I've got to tell the audience, staff works very hard to go through these processes and help the citizens figure out when there's something like this comes up. Staff puts a lot of time that no one sees, I see it, because, you know, we're all involved in it. And I want to thank you for your time that you all put into these projects and to get them to us and help the citizens out. But, so, original plans came in with a wall, there was no wall built, you all went out there, saw there was no wall built, it's okay, we have an issue, but now we're, how did we become okay with, all right, if we go through this process, the wall's not as important as it was originally?
So originally, it was an accessory apartment. So with being an attached accessory apartment by right, you have to screen so that it looks like a single-family dwelling. That's one of the criteria for an accessory apartment. You don't have to come through the public hearing process, it's just done by right. And then our zoning staff went out there to verify setbacks, and that's when they realized that there wasn't, not a screening of those stairs. So they mentioned to the builder, you know, you still have to put the door and the screening there as part of the accessory apartment. And then that's when the discussion started with the owner, that she wanted to change the plans. So when you change the plans and you do not want the screening, it is no longer an accessory apartment, it becomes a two-family dwelling, which requires an SUP. So then we evaluated it based on the neighborhood, the comprehensive plan, and we looked at it as a two-family dwelling. And we felt like, in this area, that it felt, it was in accordance with the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance. We restricted the size of the apartment, or the second-family dwelling technically, to 650. So if they wanted to expand it, they would have to come back and amend the SUP. And then there's also a condition, although it is monitored and enforced by the Virginia Department of Health, that you can only have six people in total with both those units, because that's only what the SEPTIC can handle. So between the two units, they could only have six individuals in there. But that wouldn't be enforced by the county, it would be enforced by the Health Department.
All right. That helps as far as clearing that up. And so if they had have gone with the SUP originally, then that would have come to us earlier, and this would have gone on through.
Before it was built, we would have had the application.
So it was kind of a catch-22 in a roundabout way. I don't like the wall, but I didn't know about the SUP, and I know staff, I heard, staff was very good as far as working out, here is an option you have. Of course, you got to go through the Planning Commission and the board, and they have to approve it in order to get through the finish line. But here's an extra option, if this is, and it sounds like the applicant bought the door, the door was there, it just looks like that they were like, this wall is going to look ugly if we put it on. And I understand that, I mean, I've done many a job where you start, it looks great, and owner loves the plans, and you start building it, and they're like, what is that? And they don't see it till it gets up. Sometimes you can't, the owners can't see it on paper. So I just wanted to make sure with the owner that, that this was an honest mistake, it wasn't something that is intended to get around the system. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Costello, is there, is there anything that could be done? I believe Ms. Parrish went out and offered some alternatives, which you may or may not be privy to that. Is there no other compromise that can be met with the screening? Like, say, not putting a door, screening the side? In other words, is there some type of compromise that can be reached regarding the screening? Or does it have to be screened with the door? If, take the SUP out, go back to the original?
As an accessory apartment?
Correct.
It, you didn't have to have a door up front. You could have put the door on the side, you could have designed the door in the back. It's up to the applicant how they want to design the accessory apartment. But the screening would have to be up, should the stairs be there. You could have, you could have had the stairs enter through the house, but they wanted the stairs separate from the entrance of the house. But the door could have been somewhere else. It didn't necessarily have to be in front, that's just the way it was designed and submitted as part of the building permit.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Costello?
Yeah. This goes back to September of 2022, correct?
Correct.
I know there have been several times when we've had accessory dwelling units come before us as a board. This did not, did it?
No, because it was an attached accessory apartment, and those are permitted by right with certain criteria. The ones that, that the board hears are the detached ones that are in accessory dwelling units or accessory structures.
What I'm trying to, trying to figure out is why this is so familiar, because we have had this discussion, I believe, on this particular property as a board somewhere along the line. And I don't know whether this was, because I remember the discussion being about the fact that it had to be totally enclosed, where we talked about what the ordinance requires. So, so this is maybe just discussions that we've had outside of board meetings, because it has not, nothing on this property has come before the board before at all. Okay, that's, that helps me understand that a little bit better. Just so I understand the process a little bit better. Had this come to you as an SUP originally, for a multifamily? It would have been, just what we are here seeing tonight, it would have been the apartment upstairs with the stairs, and since it was a multifamily, there would be no requirement under the ordinance to screen the stairway, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. It, this, this one, this property is on SEPTIC?
Yes.
So it really wouldn't have made any difference as far, other than just restricting the total number of people as far as Department of Health was concerned about the additional living space. As long as it, as long as it was under a certain number of people in the whole building, it would be suitable for that SEPTIC, right?
The Health Department reviews all the applications, so even when an accessory apartment comes in as a building permit, and if it's on SEPTIC, they will review that. And they'll determine whether, and they usually have the applicant do some kind of study or evaluation to see if it could handle the additional, whatever they're trying to do, if it's an addition or another unit. So they'll review all the applications and determine whether the SEPTIC is compatible to what they want to do.
Thank you.
Oh, it's six, limited to six per?
Yes.
Okay. The house sells. 10 people move in. Who's, who's regulating that?
Health Department.
How are they regulating that?
I would have to leave that up to them, I don't know if it's complaint-based, I'm not sure how they monitor that, but it would, it's their conditional use permit, it is recorded at the court. But it would, it's their conditional use permit, it is recorded at the courthouse. So when you buy the house, you should be able to see the document. Now, when it's sold, I don't, you know, I don't know how they would monitor that.
No, that's fine. You know, I've really appreciated all the discussion here, because, you know, to me, this living unit has been screaming internal accessory apartment and not duplex, which is the, you know, sort of the alternative. The only difference seems to be that whether you have to screen or not screen the access. Is that right?
In this scenario, yes, because it doesn't have the appearance of a single-family dwelling. Accessory apartments have to be entirely contained. And when we're looking at this from the street, we want to be able to, it's just a single-family dwelling.
I'm fool people. In a sense, I guess, I mean, it, you know, it sort of defies logic in this particular instance. I mean, I think Ms. Larson's question just a moment ago, you know, the idea that somebody might want to sell a, might want to buy a house and maybe they've got six people in the household, and then they have another child, you know? How do you, how do you ever police that? That just doesn't seem to me to be something anybody would do, health department or not. I'm kind of, it really is perplexing to me. I mean, I appreciate everything Ms. Rooney told us about her experience and in response to Mr. Hippel's question about her intentions. You know, the door's sitting in the garage, you know, I understand that. And is there no way we can figure out a way to get a door on that is not as unattractive? This is a very convoluted process to be dealing with, and I understand the complications all the way through here. But boy, I wish I could, I'm.
I just want to say, I understand what's going on, finally, finally. Because I didn't know it was attached to the house particularly. But coming from a design standpoint and somebody who's rehabbed houses and looks at a design, I want to see something that looks aesthetically pleasing instead of somebody driving by and going, oh my God, look what they did to that house. So that, that's where I would come from. And having dealt with a lot of rental properties in the past, if you have more than allowed people in a unit, you call the police. I've done it, and they will take care of it, and they will get housing people out. So that, I don't think that that's a concern in the future. I wouldn't see that. But that's something that can be taken care of, that's not, that has nothing to do with this.
Well, the only, the only thing about that part is that there's not a general rule about the number of people that can be in a house. This would have, people would have to have reference to this special use permit condition that would say you can't have more than six in the combined living space.
Yeah, there are, well, I don't know, in James City County, but I'm going to tell you, the city of Charlottesville says two people, two bedrooms, two people per bedroom. So it would depend on how many bedrooms they have, and that's usually enforced across the, like Kristi.
Yeah, she's going to tell us what the, we do have.
Carrie probably could answer that, but I just figured, what we have is what we define as a family. And it has certain criteria. It's basically, we don't have a number that we would limit if everyone was related by blood. However, if, you know, two people wanted to live with, you know, two unrelated people, and we have those scenarios. But no, we don't have a specific limit by bedroom. So yeah, it would be up to the health department to regulate that, should they catch wind that they're over their occupancy for their septic permit. Now, I would imagine that if someone did purchase it and had that conditional, they could probably reevaluate the septic system and upgrade it based on their occupancy load. So I would imagine that that would be, you know, a solution down the road.
And they could also, if they, if ten people moved in, they could also say, we're going to delete the septic and tie into the sewer.
That would be another option.
So that would give them, you know, if they sold it. And I know that, you know, up our end where we have a lot of septics, it's two-bedroom, three-bedroom, that's how the septic's set up. That's for a three-bedroom house or a four-bedroom house, and most time they go off of that. And, you know, are there more people in there? Probably some there are.
That's not the question. Have further comments or?
Oh, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Are there any other questions to Mr. Zhang before we move into more speakers? Okay. Our next speaker is Anne Merkley.
Anne Merkley, 136 Country Club Drive, directly across the street from Rita. One of the questions you had asked about multiple-family housing, there is in this neighborhood. When you turn onto Country Club Drive, there's eight apartments on your right. That's part of our neighborhood. So there is multiple families living there. And all of these apart, yes, there's eight, they're all connected. And we've been in that, my house, since 1980. And they were there before I even moved in. And they're still occupied. Pretty much, everything has already been said. But Rita has gone through a lot. Her daughter had actually bought her own home when her father died and Rita was having battling cancer and having a lot of health problems. Her daughters sold her house, moved in to take care of her mom. And I think that's very admirable of her to do that. This has been a real stress for both of them. And if you ever go into Lisa's apartment, it's like one of these tiny houses you see. Her and her dog just fit. You couldn't fit more people up in that. Because I went over to see it and took her a gift, homecoming gift. So I don't think that's really an issue as far as people living there. Does anyone else have any questions, since I've lived there for so long?
We don't typically have an exchange with the speaker, but thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Carrie Garves, or Garvis?
I live at 134 Country Club Drive, across the street, not directly, maybe about thirty degrees. And when we first moved in there twenty-five years ago, that was a vacant lot, had apple trees on it and deer. And I would have liked to have kept it that way, but if there has to be a house over there, it's fine. What she's got is no problem at all. Looks nice. That's it.
Tammy Berryhill?
Berryhill, and I live at 137 Country Club, and I'm the property that's immediately adjacent, our properties connect. And just to say that aesthetically, I have no problems with the way it's set up. My carport is equally open and right across from, we match just fine. So I have no problems. I can't address any county codes, wouldn't even try. But just to say that as a neighbor, we're fine. Okay?
Thank you. I completely, Mr. May, I am so sorry, I forgot to have you come do the PC report. Oh, that's right, okay. Lord. I'm sorry. Benny got me all kinds everywhere. I apologize. No, you were very impressive. All right. Let me close the public hearing and look to the board for discussion and/or a motion.
Let me just start out with what's really sort of bugged me a little bit about this. And Ms. Rooney, thank you very much for coming and being very straightforward with this. Be quite honest with you, I drove by your place earlier today and took a look at it, it's very nice, very nice. I will tell you that when I came into this meeting, I was not inclined to support this. And there were several reasons. And I still have some concerns, but we'll talk about that in a minute. You know, I think what my concern is, is this is, appears, had the appearance at least, maybe not directly, but it would have the appearance to a lot of folks in the community of, we have a set of rules, we have ordinances, and the plans were approved under the ordinance, and it wasn't built that way. And so, staff rightly says, no, you can't do that, you got to go back and do this. And that started the whole process here. You know, if, if we, if we make an exception, okay, it has to be pretty good reasons why, we can do that. But the question then becomes is, how do we treat other people who come forward with a similar type of objection or problem with the ordinance? You know, just because you don't like the ordinance, or you don't like the way it looks, doesn't mean that that's what you can do. I mean, it's pretty clear, the plan was there, it was supposed to be done. And I will tell you that I went by and looked at it, and to be quite honest with you, if it were mine, I would probably want it enclosed, because I think it would enhance safety. And I think it would enhance protection from the weather. But that's just my opinion. Clearly, it, without the screening or the door, it does not present a tremendous impediment to the neighbors. I think it's a very aesthetically looking, pleasing place. So I'm just, I'm just concerned about the process by which we got here. And the fact that if you had done this differently from the very beginning, if we'd known about it and done it differently from the very beginning, this would have been a totally different process. It wouldn't have been an administrative thing, it would have been a legislative case, and we would have had a chance to weigh in on it and everything. So my perception, my concern is the perception that other members in the community say, well, there are the rules, but if you decide you don't want to abide by the rules, then there's a way around it. And no matter how justified it might be, you know, that may well be the perception that we have with some of the folks in the community. That bothers me. That has bothered me a lot. I've wrestled with this quite a bit. You make a compelling case with you and your neighbors. I don't think the world's going to end if we approve it. But I always have concerns about the process that we go through, and that we do so equitably for all of our citizens. I'll reserve judgment until I decide here in the last minute, but I'd like to hear from my fellow board members.
All right, I'll be next. You know, it's always important, as far as for me, to understand the citizen and what they're going through and what's happening, as all our board members are. And that's why my questions were to the point and right, you know, you're trying to put one over on me, you know? And, you know, and I can see where you got to a certain point, and then you were like, okay, well, we bought the door, we're getting ready to put this in, we really don't like it, we don't want to put it in. We submitted plans with it, and that's what's gotten you in it. You submitted plans with this, because it's accessory, and then we said, okay, let's go with an S U P. Because staff said, hey, there's another option, but you've got to go through this process. Which I'm glad there are other options. So we're, you know, if it gets approved tonight, we're not approving Plan A. We're planning a new plan, which is B, which probably should have come to us as far as A from the beginning, instead of the other way around. And I can see, you know, working with all the different things and all the regulations and everything else, I can see, even knowing what I know for the years I've done this, that sometimes you miss something. You know, and sometimes it's just an honest mistake. I missed this, staff, and I'm so happy that staff was able, that just shows what good staff we have. They didn't say, no, no way, no how, it's not going to happen, get out. They said, let me look at this and see if there's, if there's another option, if you're not going to put this up and don't want to put this up, and you have fear of these other things. Maybe there's another option, maybe there's another path, but it's going to be more in-depth. You're going to go to the planning commission, you're going to go to the board supervisors, and you're going to hire a good country attorney. And move through the process. So, you know, I don't think we're, if it was approved tonight, I don't think we're saying, ladies and gentlemen, if you don't like this, you can not do it and do, because there's a lot of things that we don't allow and don't do. And usually, we can tell the characters that are frequent flyers, I would say. And so we watch for that. So that's just my two cents, and I'll let my other members have their turn.
I'm ready. Satisfied that this is a case that just is defying the normal pattern, and I'm willing to say, well, it just didn't look right, and staff helped in any way they could figure out to say, well, there's some options that you have. You know, I might have preferred a different option, but I understand. Honest concern.
Well, first of all, let me just back up what Rita said at the beginning about her time at W J C C schools and the fact that she was a real hawk when it came to saving money. And she was pretty tough, even on the school board members, I have to say. I was kind of scared of Rita.
This is payback time?
I guess so, I don't know. Let me be clear, I had no idea this was going to happen when she was, when we were working together. But, yeah, I didn't like this either, to be honest with you. Because I know how much staff time went into going out, trying to find some compromises. And also, I appreciate that your neighbors, that they like it aesthetically. It looks very nice. But I have to also think about when they move out. What, are their neighbors going to be okay with it? Or the people that move in, or, you know, is it that different from something else? I understand about the wall. I just wish, for me, this is an opportunity for us to look and say, is there a way that we can do things differently moving forward in a design? And maybe there isn't, and because I'm not, that's not my, that's planning, but maybe there is, maybe we wouldn't have gotten here. So, and it certainly doesn't seem to be, Mr. Hippel did a great job being Perry Mason and trying to find out if there was any ill intent, which doesn't appear to be. So with that, should we call for the motion? Call for a motion?
Motion for approval?
Thank you. Mr. Stevens? So, boy, I don't know what's going on, I've got to pick up the caffeine. And Mr. May, I've offended him, now you, Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Heisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, with that, we are going to take a recess, five-minute recess. I'm gonna grab-
Of the primary service area along Forge Road, North Riverside Drive, and Dyaskin Road from Forge Road to the CSX Railroad. At its May fourteenth meeting, the board adopted an initial resolution directing staff to prepare amendments to the zoning ordinance to create an overlay district for the setback regulations and to rezone the parcels shown on the map to the overlay district. Accordingly, staff has prepared ordinance language to create the scenic roadway overlay district. The language establishes that existing unimproved parcels will follow the tiered setback approach as previously included in past iterations of the proposed amendments. This tiered setback specifies that unimproved parcels with a depth greater than five hundred feet would have a setback requirement of four hundred feet. Unimproved parcels with a depth greater than three hundred feet and up to five hundred feet would have a setback requirement of two hundred feet. And unimproved parcels with a depth less than three hundred feet or approved as flag lots would continue to have a setback requirement of seventy-five feet as established in the A-one zoning district. The language also specifies that lots created after adoption date of the overlay district would have a four hundred foot setback. If new lots are created as flag lots, they would be permitted to count the distance of the flag stem towards the setback. Accompanying this proposed ordinance language, staff has prepared an ordinance to rezone the parcel shown on the map included with any necessary resolution so that they are within the overlay district. These parcels are zone A-one general agricultural designated rural lands on the comprehensive plan land use map and located outside the primary service area. If rezoned, these parcels would continue to be within and follow the regulations of the A-one zoning district except that the setback from the scenic roadways would be governed by the overlay district. At its meeting on September fourth, the planning commission voted seven to zero to recommend denial of the proposed overlay district text and rezoning. Following the planning commission meeting, staff revised the proposed overlay district language so that the setbacks would apply to dwellings rather than all structures. This means that non-residential structures such as agricultural structures would continue to follow the setbacks specified in the A-one zoning district. Additionally, minor subdivision plots of the twenty-seven twenty-four Forge Road property were recorded creating seventy parcels. As the initial resolution was for the entire acreage of the parcel before being subdivided, staff has revised the rezoning ordinance to include these seven new parcels, bringing the total number of parcels proposed for rezoning to twenty-nine. Finally, staff has brought forward proposed ordinance language to provide additional landscape buffer and timber setback requirements along wooded community character corridors outside the PSA. This ordinance language includes a one hundred foot wide average buffer width for commercial developments, a two hundred foot wide average buffer width for major residential subdivisions, and a timbering setback of fifty feet. Staff has also brought forward a proposed amendment to the subdivision ordinance so that those regulations are reviewed during the subdivision review process. At its meeting on September fourth, the planning commission voted six to one to recommend approval of the ordinances for timber setbacks and landscape buffers. Staff finds that these ordinances will fulfill the intent of the initial resolution and recommends that the board approve the scenic roadway overlay district ordinance, approve the rezoning of the twenty-nine identified parcels to the scenic roadway overlay district, and to approve the ordinances for landscape buffer and timber setback requirements along wooded community character corridors outside the PSA. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for more?
Morgan, the map you have shown here doesn't include everything.
I don't think.
Right? What we have up on the, on the wall?
This would be specific to the overlay district rezoning for the setbacks.
Cause Dyaskin goes all the way to the railroad tracks, but it's not included in that.
So if you actually see to the top left of the map, this is the CSX railroad.
Right. And that, that should go along Dyaskin up to that point. But it's not shown on the map, so it may confuse someone. They were covering all Dyaskin all the way to the CSX railroad. So that should follow up to that point.
Right, so Dyaskin Road
Right.
there to the railroad at this location.
Exactly.
So this is exactly those parcels shown on the map the board looked at in March of this year. Really, the only difference from this map to what you've seen in your, in that business meeting is to identify the parcels that are currently unimproved. Otherwise, the parcels on the map are the same as what you've seen before.
But that goes all the way up to that intersection, and now it does.
It does.
To, to the railroad.
He just pointed out, it goes, it goes Dyaskin Road up to the general.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is what's, what's highlighted. You're just, you're just going with unimproved. So the golf course is still, even though it's improved, it doesn't, is, do you have another map that shows the, the audience that section? Cause that section would be included in that.
Okay, so you're referring to how the setback lines in green are shown?
Right.
Okay, so as of today, if the ordinance were adopted, the regulations only applies to those that are unimproved. And as you see on your map, we have four parcels which would have a setback on it. All of those are greater than five hundred feet in depth, and that has the four hundred foot setback line, which is actually orange, just to correct myself. There's a couple other parcels which are flag stems which have an exemption to the tiered approach for that. But for the golf course parcel where it is improved, they would not have any regulation if it's adopted as of day one. If they come back and subdivide it in the future, then that second clause, they would have a four hundred foot setback at that point in time.
Okay, I'm still a little bit confused cause I know that we were gonna come down that entire corridor and anything new, home wise, not run-in sheds, not, they would go into the A-one seventy-five foot that's existing now. But any new structures would then be four hundred foot off the edge of the pavement. If you have a flag lot that's, say, seven hundred foot back, it's still only four hundred foot. It wouldn't apply to that lot itself. So there's, there's, there's other lots in here that are larger tracks that aren't included. And so it's, I don't wanna, I want one bite at this and make sure we've got it right. I thought we had. And I think it got confused during the planning commission meeting as well that the, you know, cause they were, they were all thinking that, hey, this is gonna be part of, you know, any run-ins, if somebody wants to put a little fruit stand up there to sell vegetables and that sort of thing, it wouldn't be allowed. And it's, it's, we're still gonna allow those things. It's just the new structures, new homes. Not, not the barns, not the run-in sheds, not the farming stuff, but the new homes in, in through this corridor so that we could keep it as close as possible to what's existing. Now, I know there's some houses that are right up on the road. Can't do anything about those. Those are, those are existing, and we're not gonna do anything about those. And nor would we think about it. It's just that open vista was what we were capturing with this. So whether it's improved or not, cause the golf course was improved and now it's back to A-one. So now it's unimproved.
It, it remains improved because there's structures on it. The use for the SCP went away, but the parcel itself still has structures. It's considered improved.
So if, if you have a, if you have four hundred acres and you have a structure on it, meaning a house, then this doesn't apply?
For day one, and, and that's really going back to trying to limit impacts to those existing structures and avoid creating any non-conformities that would, you know, affect an owner's ability to expand on their dwellings.
I'm talking about the dwelling, but if they have four hundred acres and they have one dwelling and say it's all the way in the back of the thing. And what we're trying to do is prevent, you know, if, if somebody can build a house next to the road and have a lesser driveway, they're gonna do that. Common sense. They're not gonna build back further, most people. Now, you've got owners that have been protecting this road forever, that have done a wonderful job, and they're doing it today. And they're worried about the road, and they're worried about what could possibly happen down the road. Once it develops too close to the road, it's gonna be like every other road in James City County. This whole corridor will be just like anything else, and it might as well ride down to Newper News and, excuse Newper News, our great community, but I'm gonna call it like it is. And so that's what we're trying to keep the character of the area with having the homes setback off the road. Not the run-in sheds and that sort of thing, just the homes. And so whether the lots improved or not improved, meaning it has a structure of some sort on it, should not affect that setback. That's what I wanna make sure we, we're clear with. That, you know, any of these that have structures, cause some of them are very large pieces with a structure on there. That's, they wanna keep it always as a farm and, and bless you. And, and I think they, that, that is a great thing because that's the character of this area. So what are we missing?
I'm not sure, are, are we, are we not in a spot? Is there some working out yet to do?
I wasn't thinking so. I thought we would work.
Bring this tonight?
The last, I know when, you know, when it went through the, the planning commission, it was a lot of confusion there as well, what I felt. And just my opinion, and, you know, and, and I think that's why it was a denial because it was that I don't think everything was where it should have been. Our, our basic thing was to take this corridor and any open land, move it back, and so we don't get a sawtooth thing, house here, house here, house here, house here. Take it all and put a four hundred foot new home. If you've got an existing home and you wanna add on to it, bless you. You're where you, you're where you need to be. I don't think any of that changed. I think it's only a new structure, a new home, or a new division of land to make several homes. You know, so, and, and that should be, and then, then when people look at dividing it and going, I wanna divide this and sell it as lots, then they know right off the bat that that house needs to be four hundred foot off the road surface. And then they'll, then they know right off the bat that, okay, I've gotta design the lots like this in order to keep the character of what we have. And that's what we're trying to cap, capture, is the character. And by keeping the character of this piece, the value will be there. Because if it gets built up on the road and gets junky on the road, your values are going down. You're not gonna keep your values up. People are gonna buy because of what is here now and what they see and what all these neighbors have done so well at protecting for years and years and years. So I wanna keep their value as high as possible. If they decide to divide it, put houses in or whatever, I wanna try to make sure that with this, they have a, a larger value for their life. Does that make sense?
Now, I was just gonna articulate, especially with the golf course, cause you mentioned that specifically. The golf course, oh, let me back up. When we came back through and revised, staff defined what was improved and what was not improved. And the part was having a building on the property would be considered improved. So that would take these regulations out, goes back to A-one. And that was the purpose of ensuring that none of the existing structures would then become non-conforming, which would then have difficulty to maybe expanding. So we took that into consideration when, when changing the ordinance to hopefully reflect what you were, what we, what you wanted to protect. Now, for the golf course in specific, they do have buildings on that property. So if they wanted to demolish the buildings and build one single family home, the regular A-one setbacks would apply. However, if they wanted to come in and subdivide it into four lots, then this would then apply because you're, there's a language in here that specifically says unless you subdivide, then you have to abide by the four hundred foot setback.
What if, what if I were to go in there and develop that and say, okay, if I keep the foundation or I remodel the structure that's there, now I don't have to apply to that because it's not all gone. I've kept one structure. And then I build others to get, you know, contractors, I know the circle, they'll get around it.
Well, I mean, from, from a non-conforming perspective, if you take it down to the foundation, you lose your non-conforming.
What if I remodel it? Leave it there?
If you remodel it in the same footprint you could.
And now I can go to seventy-five foot.
But the moment you subdivide it.
Right, but I can go to seventy-five if I've got like the clubhouse is back further. We'll just pick on the golf course cause it's there. The clubhouse is back further. So I remodel that and make it into a house, but I put one seventy-five foot off the road, too. Cause now I'm back to the A-one, but now I've, I'm, I'm improved. So I can keep one structure and put my new ones, twenty acre lots up front, A-one seventy-five foot from the road. We've just lost it.
In order, if, if the property owner came in and subdivided the property, any new home on that newly created lot would have to abide by the four hundred foot setback, the way that this is written.
Even though it's considered improved?
Yes. So.
Why didn't that, why then don't we show that? Regardless, cause it sounds like regardless, that's gonna be there.
Because as it's currently platted, it's one parcel, and it has those buildings on there. So we couldn't show it as an unimproved parcel. Now, what someone does in the future, as in creating new lots, then this overlay district would kick in. Because it basically says, hey, if you subdivide it after this particular date and you wanna build a house on it, the overlay district applies to this parcel. So all of the properties that you see have the overlay district on them. However, if they're approved by this date, it means that they're exempt from this based on this ordinance, and they go back to the underlying A-one district. However, if they come in and subdivide and say, hey, I've got a, you know, forty acre lot, I've got one house on there, but I wanna subdivide twenty acres off to build another house, that new house has to be four hundred feet from that road.
Okay.
Does that make sense? We were trying to capture and eliminate the non-conforming concern that the board had.
Right.
So in order to do that, we had to define how it was improved. So instead of saying structure, which would mean everything essentially from run-ins to agricultural to whatever, we defined it as building. And the zoning ordinance talks about a building being a walled structure, so enclosed. So we were able to kinda shift those directions of how something was improved. So it captures newly created lots at a four hundred foot setback. It captures, you know, somebody wants to build one single family lot on a non-improved parcel, you have to go four hundred foot setback. Does that?
It does.
Explains it better?
Yeah, I was just, you know, for, for the citizens, I, I would, you know, it's, it's gonna be confusing until they come in and think, okay, I can build right here, and you tell them, no, you're four hundred. But if I see a map that says I'm four hundred, you know, if I'm making an improvement on a structure that's already there, it doesn't matter if the structure's a hundred foot off the road. You can still make that improvement.
That's correct.
Cause we're not gonna limit the ones who are already there. We wanna make sure that they're able to do everything they can do with their houses and their structures. We're just looking at the rest of them to push them back and, which is gonna add value in the long run to those pieces because it's gonna keep value on that whole corridor in order to keep it as, as close to what it is today. Not what it was years ago, but what it is today to try to not stop growth, but make it so it fits in the environment it's in. Cause I've had a few members, a few of the citizens say, well, well, you're, you know, you're, you're stopping growth. We've taken care of this land. We've done, I said, yeah, you have. I agree with it a hundred percent. I appreciate all that. I think y'all have done a wonderful job. But the thing about it is if something happens to you and the, and next generation sells it, the next generation sometimes isn't as attached as the generation that has it now. And so if they have it and, and decide, I'm just gonna get everything I can out of it, which I don't blame them there either. I mean, you know, I don't blame them wanting to get as much as they can out of it, but it then deteriorates the entire corridor. And it lessens everything. So then everybody's value starts to decline. And it's, it's just, you know, it's a planning thing. It's, it's, you know, and it takes years for the process and, and people to understand what value is in there. And just like what we do, you know, you ride through James City County, the trees we plant and all that. Yeah, is it crazy? Sometimes you think, have you lost your mind? We're planting trees everywhere. But the quality of the community and the look of the community and the beauty that we have is undeniable. And so that's, that was my whole thing.
And we hope that we had captured the concerns
Yeah.
as well as the needs and in what the resolution had asked for. So hopefully we did that. But we couldn't say that they were unimproved when they were truly improved based on the zoning ordinance.
Right.
But the kicker is, is the moment that they subdivide and they wanna build a new house, that, this overlay district kicks in.
Then comes in.
Correct.
That makes sense. And, and, okay, that, that, that clears that up, but I wanna, you know, make sure.
It was a very good question. It is confusing. Trust me, we were kind of.
Oh, I guarantee. Yeah, and, and I just wanna make sure that, you know, the, whoever's listening out there, our, our three customers that listen to our meetings, understand what we're, what we're talking about and, and what we're going over. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Holt, do you have some?
Everything on the map that's in red or blue is included in the new district.
Right.
And the blue just different. Graphic way to show what Ms. Parrish just articulated to address the non-conforming issue, but everything in the red and the blue.
And understand that, I just, just cause nobody's living on the golf course, I, I took that to use as an example. I could've used any of the other lots as an example as well, but I just, nobody's living out there on the golf course. I feel that, you know, it wouldn't offend anybody on using their land and.
You can't get it all on one map.
Yeah.
That's the problem. You just can't get everything you want on one map.
That's right. We'll keep working. Yeah.
I have a question from last year when I was on the planning commission, and this all came up. My understanding was that the overlay would start at Forge Road down by Richmond Road and continue along, and that there were certain lots here shown in the brown that are vacant and that it would apply to them as well. Is that not true or is that true?
Yeah, so at the time, we were looking at it through, not an overlay district, but just an amendment to the A-one zoning district. And part of making a uniform regulation is we couldn't pick out the parcels that we were going to apply it to. And so that's, at the time, it was really a ribbon down the road, what, what we were looking at. The discussions at, at the board meeting and some of those concerns led to the overlay approach where it could be a bit more targeted in which parcels we're looking at. And that kinda resulted in picking the large forty acre parcels for that.
But it would still apply to these that are not along the road, like at the end of Little Creek Dam Road there. Those parcels show that there's nothing on them and Lakeview Drive and so forth. So when those people come to build on those lots, are they gonna have to go four hundred feet back?
So those ones are not included in the?
Why?
Because they're under forty acres in size. That was the cutoff that was arrived at.
Okay, we never discussed the forty acres. We just said the whole Forge Road, this is what we're doing, but we didn't do it. Okay.
Cause some of them would be worthless.
I know.
And we don't wanna do that to people that already have lots out.
I'm just looking at something that we looked at like a year and a half ago, and I'm thinking this doesn't look like what we looked at. Okay.
Recap, the blue and the red shading are only the lots that are going to be rezoned into the overlay district.
And is it the case that, so if somebody is thinking about coming into the community and buying a parcel that, or if somebody owns a parcel and says, well, I wanna subdivide this now, it will indic, they will see indications as they do their due diligence that this is in the overlay district. Yeah.
Similar to the A. I, shown on the zone.
Now, there were some discussions too as far as, there's a, there's a few areas that were minor subdivisions, and they've been divided up to where they could be finished as far as what I consider finished. And the only way they could divide those bigger pieces up that are in the minor subdivision was in to put a major subdivision, which would include VDOT roadway and BNP's and all that, and, and maybe sidewalks and lights depending on how intense. They can still divide that, but they have to go with some of the, they have to go into the major subdivision, cause they've done minor subdivision. And then their lot now, bigger lots would then go into major subdivision. They could go that route. But there's a cost to that as far as all that infrastructure they would need to put in. But there is that option for that. Okay.
Right, that brings us to our PC report.
Evening again, Madam Chair and Board Members. I'm here for the third and final time. The, six impacted property owners addressed the commission at our meeting, and all six were in opposition to the proposed amendments. We, as Ms. Reisinger mentioned, there were two votes that happened at our meeting. The commission voted seven to zero to recommend denial of this item as it applies to the scenic roadway protection. And the commission voted six to one to recommend approval of the ordinance regarding the timber setback and the subdivision buffering. So just to kinda summarize the discussions that the commission had, the four hundred foot setback was deemed excessive, and those parcels have already been impacted by the twenty acre lot minimum historically. And the commission could not recommend the proposed amendments in the current version due to the perceived negative impacts to property owners. And as Mr. Hippel mentioned, it was my understanding on the commission as, when we were discussing this, that, that structures meant any structure, a shed, a barn, a fruit stand, things like that would have to be four hundred feet back. That was my understanding at the, at the meeting. I'm not sure if it's, if it's, is it just a dwelling or is it a structure? I'm still kind of.
It's the dwelling.
It's just a dwelling. Okay.
Thank you.
Just a may, question. Some of the, some of the speakers that spoke didn't understand as well and listen to them, and, and I have talked to some of them. That flag lot seven hundred foot back, they were thinking it started where the flag ended and the lot opened up at four hundred foot. So they were thinking, I'll be fifteen, eighteen hundred feet back in my property. And the, the ordinance is from the street edge. At flag lot, if you've got a flag lot that's seven hundred feet, you're not even coming anywhere near this. If you got a flag lot that's four hundred and five feet, you're still outside that four hundred foot setback. So there were, there were some of that confusion, and I know one was, you know, another one was confusion while I was talking about the minor subdivision and have to go to a major subdivision in order to divide your land up, and you can still do that. Hey, we're thinking that's gonna limit me on what I can do. You'll have to push back four hundred feet, but you're still gonna have to put all that VDOT infrastructure in because your subdivision you live in is all, is a minor subdivision finished. And the only route you could take now is to do a major subdivision, which then clicks into all the VDOT stuff. So I think that some of the speakers, you know, were, were dead on it. Every one of them I loved hearing. And, you know, some of them just didn't understand everything about it. And, and, you know, some of their concerns didn't even deal with their property. But they, they thought and were told that it started further back than they realized. So.
I would say one of the speakers that did have a flag lot was under the impression when he came to the meeting that that, cause his. that that, because his, he had a flag lot and his property really kind of started, there was a 60 foot path through there for a long distance. But then when the property actually opened up, that he would have to be 400 feet off of that property line. That was his understanding. County did mitigate that concern at the time and explained that, no, it is the parallel. It is from the street, 400 feet back from the street. So that would not impact that individual. I know they did come to the meeting with that understanding, but county staff did mitigate that at the meeting.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And thank you for coming this evening and being very patient. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing. We have two speaker cards. The first is Patricia Hunter.
Good evening. How are you all? Thank you for your time. Those three big parcels up there belong to my family. And I understand all of this stuff about the scenic byway, but we've owned this land since the 1600s. And if somebody came to you all and said that they wanted to take 400 feet, most people in this room, it would be their entire yard. We have been wonderful stewards of this land. It is pristine. And I said this in the Planning Commission meeting. If my great grandfather came back today, he would recognize exactly where he was. We have a family cemetery there. This is so upsetting to my family because it seems like it's overreach. That if you drive down Forge Road and also Dyasken Road to the railroad, it is anything but scenic. There are fences, there are structures, there are tractors, there are sheds. There's any number of, in my opinion, unattractive structures. And we are being penalized. We have done none of that. We have put nothing on this land in 400 years. And now you're going to come in and take a, two. We're going to hit, be hit twice, Dyasken Road and on Forge Road. And I don't know what that comes up to in acreage, but it devalues our property. We've paid taxes since we've been here. We had a number of family members that were in James City County government. And I just think that this is excessive. It is immensely excessive because people want to maintain their views and their pristine. Pristine viewpoint when they drive down Forge Road. What compensation do we get for this? Do we get any compensation? I just don't think it would go over well if we came to you, or you, or you, or you, and said, we're taking 400 feet. If you don't have 400 feet, we're going to take 300. If you don't have 300, we're going to take 200. All so somebody can be happy when they drive down their road. Thank you.
Harriet Mater.
Madam Chairman and Board Members, my name is Harriet Mater. I'm a resident of 1550 Maidens Road in Goochland, but I too am part of the Coles family and who owns pretty much everything in red. I don't know about this little parcel over there. But everything that you see in red is, belongs to my family. And we think we have, as Patricia said, been unfairly and adversely impacted by first year density zoning. And now our land will be degraded again by your scenic overlay zone of a 400 foot setback. My first objection is that both the density rule and the scenic overlay setbacks are unfair and inequitable in targeting only landowners with more than 40 acres. You allow others to unscenically develop at will. In the revised version, only residences, as you said, only a house. So not agricultural support structures. Lean to's, run ins, sheds with farm equipment like manure spreaders, tractors, et cetera. Those are scenic, but a house is not. There's some startling hypocrisy in carving out exceptions and definitions for a select few while imposing scenic setbacks on others. The Dyasken Road from 60 to the railroad is already unscenic. And I noticed you've taken that out. You talked about only going to the railroad tracks from the Forge Road. But the Forge Road runs only from Towana to Chickahominy Haven. It is not a through road. It is not the Blue Ridge Parkway. And it is not a Lexington, Kentucky Horse Farm Road. Those little houses, they're big houses, but with all of those disparate fences, some one color, some one color. You know, they look like puzzle pieces and it's not scenic. But that's their property. And I'm not going to legislate to make it scenic. They, on the other hand, have no such compunction about attacking our land. And, and, you know, to make it scenic. Who's driving from Towana to Chickahominy Haven that that, they need that corner of Forge Road and Dyasken Road to be scenic? Because that's the only part. It's maybe a mile of, of Dyasken Road and maybe two miles of Forge Road that's now going to be scenic. And my second point is that your setback only considers the road frontage, not the land in total. So the Lobz tract, which is the big one down here at the bottom where the uncle's neck pieces are along the side. That is more than half marshland. If you look at that and you see that big thing at the bottom, that's marshland. So you take the 400 feet and there is very little viable land left. And the same is true about Colesville, which is the land on top. If you take your 400 feet, unless, you know, we clear all the land, there's, there's nothing. You know, there's very little left, all for somebody's scenic views. And speaking of that marshland, you have permitted nine tiers that, that, you know, are not scenic and do degrade the ecology. And my last point is about compensation. If you're going to do this, I hope you won't. But if you're going to degrade and devalue our land, we should have just consummate, conserve, compensation. We've been good stewards. We've been here for 400 years. We've been good citizens of James City County. And this is so not fair. Thank you.
Cards. We will close the public hearing. I'll look to the board for discussion and/or motion.
Well, I'll start it off. My district, you know, I can understand the frustration. I don't see it as a taking. I see it as a trying to enhance the whole area. And I guess it'd be no different than, you know, you own a piece of land that's on the water. And depending on how much swamp you have and all that, you pay taxes on it, but you can't do anything with it. You know, boaters can go by and look at your land and we keep it open. And, you know, maybe it's, it's similar to that. I mean, you know, you've, you've got a piece of land that, you know, sometimes half of it's in water. You're paying taxes on that. You can't even walk over. Can't dig a tree out. Can't dig a bush out. Can't do anything. But it does, as far as the community enhances the community. And, you know, all those people that have waterfront properties are paying for somebody to ride the boat down the road or down the river and look at it. And, and, you know, and, and they have certain amount they can't touch. You know, the, y'all have done an excellent job taking care of land. No doubt about it. No doubt about it. And, and, you know, and it's. It's, it's very tough to figure out how do we, you know, protect something. And I've had a lot of people say, it's not much. That's, that's one of our prettiest roads in James City County. I don't care what anybody says. You'd be hard pressed to find a prettier road than Forge Road in James City County. And I know it goes down to the Haven and even had some planning commissions going, you know, it's, it's not a, it's, it's not a byway. It's not this, it's not that. And it's going down to the Haven. Well, I like the people in the Haven and they take care of their stuff as well. I mean, if it dies down to Haven, it's got to die somewhere. The other end dies at Richmond Road, which is not as pretty as I think it ought to be, but it dies there. But in between is unique and it's different. And I mean, if somebody tell me a, a prettier road in James City County that still has the potential of staying that way or close to it, I'd like to see it. And I've been through, I think, every road in James City County more than one time. And that is without a doubt, I think, the prettiest road. Is it, is it perfect? No. And, but neither are our decisions up here either. We try and, and we try to do the best we can. I would hate to see this road developed like some of the other areas we have in James City County to the point where it ruins it and we lose the value that we have in this corridor. And from the railroad tracks on Dyasken in the other direction, there's a ton of houses on there. And that was never included in this because there's so many houses. And so it was like, okay, let's stop at the railroad track. Let's not go any further because it's, it's nothing you can capture there. It's, it's full of houses. And, and that full of houses could be all the rest of the way up Forge Road. And, you know, if, if a, if a farm fence is offensive than, than a house with 10 vehicles around it on the road, right on the front of the road, would definitely offend you. So it's just, you know, I think when you try to do something like this, it's very tough because you end up with offending or hurting somebody or, or doing something. And that's not an intent. The intent is for the community as a whole. And I understand, okay, how about if it was you and the community decided to do this to your land? I, I would, I would have questions on it too. So I don't, no ma'am. I have, I, I don't doubt there are. And it's not the intent of this body. Whatever decision's made is to offend, hurt, or do anything to anyone. But if we don't do something and try to save this beautiful road, then I don't think we've done our job. And I think that it would, in the long run, it would not enhance James City County to one day have developed and run wild down that road. So that's just my two cents. I'll let the other members give us some guidance.
I'll, I'll just add a couple of comments. You know, I certainly understand and appreciate the sense of families that have been dedicated to, to this property for centuries. And the challenge that we do face always though, is that at some point, a family decides, well, yeah, we've, we've had this land for a long time, but now we're not going to do that. We, we're going to, it's time for us to reap the, the rewards of that, that land. And it does have an impact on the community. And one of the things our community has said is that in order to help preserve some of that land, we would like to work with landowners. And so we do have a, a purchase of development rights program that says basically, you can keep your property. We will compensate you for the, the delta between its agricultural value and its development value. And I think we'd certainly love to have conversations about that. I think that we know that, you know, families move away and their attachments to the land may remain, but maybe not. And we've had instances in which families that have long histories in the community have said at a particular point, okay, well, we've had this for 300 years. Time to, to go now. And as I say, I realize it seems like you're doing this for somebody else. But those somebody else's have said, you know, we're willing to make an investment in it. And maybe there's an opportunity to figure out a way forward with that. But it's a value of the land, even for people who don't routinely come and drive that road. They see it as, as a way of maintaining a kind of quality of life that is important to distinguish our community from others. And so, you know, I think that's really the, the balance we've been trying to reach is recognizing that this does have implications for people who have been good stewards of the land, who want to keep the land in their family. Great. We can work with you on, on that. If it's a land, a piece of land that's important to the community. And we want to recognize that, yeah, there still has to be an opportunity for some development on that land. And I know there've been restrictions passed down. But if we don't have those restrictions, it also imposes a cost on the community about how do we provide, you know, if, if we say we're back to one unit per three acres. That's going to potentially produce a lot of additional demand for services that we would have a very hard time meeting in a lot of, a lot of our more rural sections. So I think that's the, the kind of struggle that we're often dealing with.
All right. Is there a motion? Okay. Wait just a moment because there's got to be four, right? So we would need a motion for the ordinance creating the overlay district. Do we need four separate motions? Okay. So should I do them one by one? Okay. The first that we need is an ordinance creating the overlay district. Need that motion?
Motion for approval.
Okay. Mr. Stevens.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I need an ordinance rezoning the affected properties into the newly created overlay district.
Motion for approval.
Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I need an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance.
Move.
Motion for approval.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye. And I need a motion for the ordinance amending the subdivision ordinance.
Motion for approval.
Mr. Stevens?
Ms. Knoll?
Mr. McGlinnan? Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye. Thank you. That brings us to disposal of county property located at 4601 Iron Brown Road. The Commonwealth continues to work on the property, but it will give to Colonial Behavior Health, but the agreement is taking longer than inspected. So we're going to close the public hearing and re-advertise this hearing, public hearing at a later date. Disposable, disposal of county property located at 3175 Ironbound Road. Mr. Purse?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. In October 2022, James City County purchased 1.98 acres of land located, located at 3175 Ironbound Road. The property was purchased because of the proximity to the existing Clara Bird Baker Elementary School site and the potential for expansion. On July 11th, 2024, the Board of Supervisors approved the special use. On July 11th, 2024, the Board of Supervisors approved the special use permit and rezoning applications for the 41,000 square foot pre-K kindergarten center, uh, pre-kindergarten center on the property. As a condition of that approval, a subdivision plat is necessary to combine 3175 Ironbound and 3131 Ironbound Road into one property to accommodate the development. Staff has also included a provision that will preserve the parking for the Powhatan Creek Trail through the property. Staff recommends approval of the attached resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute the documents necessary to transfer the property to the Williamsburg James City County School Board. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? All right. I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have any speaker cards?
No ma'am.
The public hearing.
Move the uh, approval of the disposal of county property.
Mr. Stevens?
Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. We have the designating, designation of the voting delegate for the VACO Annual Conference. Person who's still there when the voting takes place is usually the one that-
I nominate President Larson. President-elect Larson. Excuse me.
I have a question on that. If as president, you have a vote, right?
She's not.
Oh, do you only have two votes?
That's what I'm looking at. What if, what if we have, you have your vote as president and then we have our other member and now we got two James City votes?
Well, we've always had that because I've, I've, a member of the board and I've been the vote and typically I've been the only one there. So.
So did your vote count as two?
But it's never, probably not, but it's, it's never come down to-
That tight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Hippel's stating.
Yeah. You're welcome to stay.
Now's the one or not.
Okay. All right. We'll stick with the original motion.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. There's one vote we needed too.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye. That brings us to board request and directives. Ms. Knoll?
Um, let's see. I was very busy. Last month I took a tour of the water treatment plant, which was very interesting. I enjoyed that very much. And I encouraged them to try to get students to start coming back out there and taking tours. Middle school because they get excited about that kind of stuff. Mr. McGlinnan and I went to the airport, name change and ribbon cutting. So now it is Waltrip Williamsburg Executive Airport. And it was lovely and it was a nice ceremony. And then Mr. Reinheimer and I attended the Retail Association luncheon and get together. And that was, that was very interesting because they had some lot of really good facts to put out about number of people, shopping and small stores and that kind of thing. We all went to the Honigs, Konigsburg thing. And I also went to the Chickahominy Annual Parade on Saturday. That's it. You're welcome.
Yeah. I'm sorry I missed the Chickahominy Day. I usually try to make that. I missed that this year. And um, so Linda's going to give me a fit. I know that. Um, the um, this Saturday is the Fish Fire for the Volunteer Fire Department. So any of the citizens out there that, that can make it to the Fish Fire, please do. And um, three to seven, right there at the, the um, firehouse on Forge Road. Um, also I talked to um, one of our old um, employees and um, used to be our dog warden Buck Stewart. And his son, of course, has, has worked for us and I think he's close to the oldest employee we have right now. And with 40 some years of service, uh, you could be, but he's got 40 some. Um, but um, you know, he was, he was in the CIA and was a dog warden for us. And he came by the office and, and um, you know, the, it's, it's funny because we do a lot of texting and emailing and all that. And, and I love it when our community comes by the office or catches me somewhere and, and we're not texting and emailing and, and kind of the old country way of communicating, come by and see you and see what's going on. Well, there's a sidewalk that's down from his house that goes down through there and it goes to Anderson Vet. And I wanted to take a walk down there. They evidently had to build this bridge. And it's about rotten and too supposedly because it's all overgrown and, and he was like, um, is that something that we normally take care of? And I said, well, you, you live on that side of railroad tracks. We only take care of this side of railroad track. Kidding with him, playing with him. And, and um, I said, I'll check into that and um, and, and let you know as, and I'll try to get by down through there and, and look at that area. But he said it's the um, evidently they put a lot of money into building that because the county asked for that to be put in there over that ravine. And now it's kind of overgrown and, and, and nobody uses it pretty much. But you know, it's eventually those sidewalks will connect hopefully to uh, to Anna so that he can walk safely to the Fish Friday Saturday. I'm sure we won't have it by then, but we'll work on it. So Mr. Stewart, um, I, I, I'm sure you're watching tonight. So I just said definitely I would put that out there and, and let them know. So that, that's, Madam Chair, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you.
Uh, just a couple of, a couple of things. Um, Ms. Larson and I uh, attended the Community Action Agency Breakfast this uh, this past, um, uh, I guess it was, was it Monday? Friday. The days kind of run together sometimes. Uh, and uh, I ran right from there to our Scattered Site Housing Committee meeting. Um, uh, but also uh, it was the 54th anniversary of the Waltrips uh, operation of that airport. And we heard that it was one of, I believe, six privately owned airports in Virginia. And uh, so we have that, that to think about in our community. Um, I also want to thank the county administrator and staff who attended uh, a community meeting I held in Grove uh, uh, last week. Uh, it was very well attended. We had about 50 people there and lots and lots of questions, but also lots of opportunities to tell them about good things that are starting to happen uh, in the community based on county decisions that we've been making like improving stormwater and, and the roads, neighborhood roads and uh, convenience center and so forth. Um, so uh, I, I really do appreciate uh, all of the support that we had at that, at that meeting. And Scott was, of course, as usual, great uh, self answering questions for folks and uh, keeping me from promising too much. But uh, I, I did all just want to, also just want to take a, a moment. Tonight we talked a lot about the way in which staff uh, in the planning division uh, uh, have been working to try to find solutions for folks to try, at least give them options and, and opportunities to figure it out how they can get uh, uh, something accomplished that they would like to see happen. Um, I just want to say that I, I hope our citizens have been paying attention to what's been going on. Uh, and their own experiences with the county staff has been like mine. I, I get to see these folks in the most challenging situations accomplishing so much. And I think the most recent example of that was just the phenomenal work done by our police department, our fire department and EMS in uh, responding to that road rage incident and apprehending uh, the suspect uh, on the, on the ferry. Um, uh, just remarkable uh, situation. I should, I, I would also say that shows the value of the ferries as opposed to a bridge or a tunnel. But uh, that, you know, that, that group was, was uh, just tremendous in acting so swiftly and I, and the citizens assistance was vital uh, to accomplishing that. Uh, those who observed what had happened and responded so quickly. I just want to, want to uh, thank them for that. And to highlight um, two folks who are not residents of James City County, but have had a powerful impact here. Elizabeth Costellini has uh, just uh, announced her retirement as the Executive Director of Preservation Virginia, formerly known as the APVA. Uh, her work uh, with us on Jamestown Island and uh, all of the efforts that she's put into um, helping to create more opportunities for people to learn our history and uh, to allow for more and more uh, discovery uh, at Jamestown Island has, has just been a phenomenal asset. And I know that she has well earned her retirement, but uh, we, we will certainly miss her. Uh, and Janet Green, uh, who will be retiring shortly as the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity. It's the, it's the Williamsburg Greater Peninsula Habitat for Humanity, but her impact on this community has been, has been just terrific. To have uh, so. Mention those things. Thank you.
Um, just a few items. Uh, on the 25th of September, I attended the uh, uh, Child Development Resources groundbreaking uh, for the new uh, building that they're taking over from the old uh, Community Services Coalition over on uh, Waller Mill Road. And it was quite a turnout. Um, and I guess David Nice Company is doing the renovations for them. But uh, they are uh, off and running uh, for getting that building back up and consolidating their campus uh, with uh, programs with all, all of that one. Right afterwards, I went to the JCSA luncheon. That was the last one there, I think. They did unlock the door and let me in. So I did get lunch, got a chance to, to meet with everyone. Um, uh, this last Friday, I had the opportunity to do something that I have never done before. Uh, and I hope I never have to do again. Uh, I had my very best friend from high school uh, invited me to the Pentagon for the retirement of his son. Who was a 95 Academy grad. He retired from uh, the reserves, Air Force Reserves as a full colonel. And uh, they actually had him working in the Pentagon one month out of the, out of the, one week out of every month. And I have spent my whole career trying to stay away from the Pentagon and now I know why. Uh, that's a big building and I, I don't think I could get around it much anymore. But uh, it was nice to be there uh, and see a, a young person who had served his country so well retire. I have also had three opportunities to um, pitch for the Home for the Holidays program that we've talked about before. Um, I spoke to the American Legion Post over 39 uh, right before our last meeting. And then uh, managed to strongarm my fellow Vietnam vets into making a donation from uh, VVA Chapter 957. And today um, was invited out to Patriots Colony and spoke to their residents association and uh, made the, passed out the, the brochures to anybody who would like to participate in, in the thing there. So we're trying to get word of mouth out and if anybody wants any more brochures, I'll be glad to get them for you. So thank you.
Uh, so um, I attended Habitat for Humanity um, ribbon cutting. I have to admit that in my time on this, this was the first one I'd ever been able to get to because I, I guess I've always had a conflict. And it was an incredibly moving experience. For um, this mom with her two kids and um, she works incredibly hard, had found it impossible to get um, to buy a home on her own and is working with Habitat for Humanity. She's vol, she volunteered her hours, all of her hours helping with her home and at the restore. And um, this was a ha, a home that had been left to um, in an estate situation. And the um, people who inherited the home made a decision that instead of selling it, because it was in one of our very popular neighborhoods that would have gone very quickly because people want to get in there, great swim team, great established neighborhood. And they made the decision rather than having someone take it, turn it for a huge profit, um, that they were gonna, they were gonna give it to Habitat for Humanity. And so um, it was just, it was really something else. And the work on the home was beautiful. And I know they had a second one in James City County Saturday afternoon. So they had two on Saturday, which was just incredible. Um, I also attended the week before that, a presentation at the James City County Library on the new natural playground that they're going to build, which is going to be so neat. Um, it is really going to be a natural playground with like a sand pit. There's going to be areas where kids can use sticks and hay bales and um, there'll be a, an area where you have a slide, but it, it goes into the, to a hill. So it, it's just a totally different, I encourage people to go onto the library website and look it up. This is something that the um, former director and the current director um, both put their heads together and came up with this and it's really cool. And the friends of the library are um, helping to get it off the ground. Kwanas who did a lot of work and donating out at the James City County Library, the, the science area out there, they're also contributing. So it's really neat. So um, they could use some additional donations though. Um, one thing before I wrap up, I have great concern, as I've shared with you, over the Stone House area. Um, I really think that we need to make sure that we are staying on top of the development out there, especially when it comes to the schools. Um, I mean, houses are just, it's just incredible um, the, the amount of growth out there. So I just think that that's something that we need to um, and um, I, I did want to give um, just a moment to talk about what happened on um, Saturday. Uh, because it was horrific. Um, we are not a community that typically has dealt with a shooting um, like that where a mother and a son were injured. Um, and it, over road rage. Uh, that's just not something that we've seen here. And um, it was just, it really shook me. Um, I was out and I, I got a phone call from the Assistant County Administrator and I wrote him back. I said, is this a pocket dial? Because it was Saturday and you know, beautiful day outside and, and he said, no, you need to call me. And um, he called me and told me what was going on. And I, I want to say, say thank you to um, to Brad and Scott and everybody for, for keeping us updated on what was going on. But um, I had a house full, including two children. My na, my next door neighbors were over. And so I couldn't talk about it in front of them. And um, because I didn't want to scare them. Um, they had already seen a, a previously Saturday um, uh, someone get um, injured down on, um, a pedestrian get injured down. So one I hope we'll also keep in our thoughts and prayers. But um, so didn't want to say much in front of them. And so I was kind of pacing and um, praying for all involved. And I, I, I want to echo Supervisor McGlinnan's um, thanks to our EMS, dispatch, fire, police, the citizens that stopped to help. Um, it just was a, it just, thank you all for, for, for that. Um, but I hope it has taught us something. And I hope that's that we'll take a breath. Like if somebody comes in your lane or pulls out in front of you or whatever the situation, and I don't know what the situation was here. Take a breath. There is nothing worth taking somebody's life over in a split second decision. It's just, it, no one should have to experience that. And someone is going to probably, if, if a court sees it that way, someone's going to go away for a very long time. And that's a life wasted as well over something very, very stupid. But what I have found so remarkable was uh, this uh, young man was a member of 757 Swim and they sent out a um, a thing on social media asking for help for the family, meals, donations. And so I went through there a little bit and there were um, there were people who commented, Grafton Band Family, praying for you. Um, you know, War Hill Band Boosters donating. Um, we're a CGBD Swim Family, we're a Tide Swim Family, we're a WAC Swim Family, we're praying for you. And so on the flip side of something very horrific, humans can be really good people. And so I'm appreciative of that. Um, and I'm appreciative again of the first responders and everything that they did on Saturday. Um, and we'll um, someone said crimes coming to our area. Crime is not coming to our area. Somebody did something really stupid is coming to our area. We are still a great community. We don't have things that happen like that very often. And even if they did, it's- We don't have things that happen like that very often. And even if they did, it's not because we're a bad area. It's because somebody did a really bad thing. So.
Madam Chair, uh, Mr. Hippel reminded me that we, we also just need to, to, uh, recognize that we'll have opportunities, I'm sure, to more formally recognize her. But, uh, want to just mention vision by the superintendent.
Yes.
Schools to retire. Appreciate all of the service that she's provided to the community and her steady leadership that's brought us to fully accredited schools across the district. And, uh, hopefully we'll be able to build on her achievements. Superintendent-
Yes. And really, I think any administrator that went through COVID, I mean, unchartered territory completely, rather, that's administration in our county or through the schools, just incredible. So, um, before I turn it over to the report of the county administrator, I did want to make a, and I don't believe there is a reason to enter into closed session. If you all are okay with that, there is really no update offer at this juncture.
And, and one other thing, um, our county administrator, I'm gonna miss it tomorrow, but, um, he's gonna be at Kiwanis tomorrow, aren't you stalking?
Yes, sir.
There you go. I'm sorry I'm gonna miss it. I, I wanted to make it, but I got a few other things I gotta take care of.
I'm sure you'll have good reporting sources.
Yes.
Let me know how I-
I know it'll be good.
Thank you. My turn?
Yes.
Great. A couple of items to share. I know we've talked an awful lot or heard a lot about hurricanes in the news, Hurricane Helene and the, and the impact there, and then Hurricane Milton that's approaching. I just want to share our region began supporting Hurricane Helene's response efforts prior to its landfall, uh, through our regional task force. The team originally went staged in Orlando, moved to Tampa, and after the storm, ended up in Mitchell County, North Carolina, helping with recovery and search areas, efforts there. Uh, we've had a team member from the beginning, Captain Brian Hinesman from our department, deployed with the team initially and is a part of their rescue component and is doing very well. We have spoken to him a number of times. Assistant Fire Marshal Bob Midturn deployed today, uh, to replace one of the communications specialists on the team. And as he arrived in North Carolina, the team received word that they will be redeploying back to Florida to help with, uh, response to Hurricane Milton as it comes through Florida and moves along. So I do want to say I'm really proud that members of our department are willing to serve and be able to assist other communities and, and people in their time of need. And I just want to thank to all of the team members because it's a large team from the region participating in that effort. And again, prayers to the communities and places and people that are going through something that really is, uh, life-changing and devastating in many aspects as well. Um, I also want to mention, uh, the Naval Weapons Station commanding officer in a separate topic, uh, reached out to meet with Ms. Larson and I this week to share that the Department of Navy is putting out an RFI for small modular reactors or other power generate, generation technologies, uh, to serve Navy installations in their surrounding communities. So they're really looking to industry for ideas on how they would meet power needs in, uh, these Navy installations across the country. And Congress was briefed by the Department of Navy this week, selected seven areas to start with, the Naval Weapons Station in Oceana being two of those seven, primarily because they have land availability and a need, I guess, for that into the future. There is a lot, should be information out in the press related to this that, uh, we can pick up on. But the commanding officer really just wanted to make sure that, to share that we were aware of it, that the conversation is early on, that it is years away and a lot of public input with anything the Navy may do here or elsewhere. Uh, and that if we have questions or concerns or hear from residents, to please don't hesitate to reach out to him and share that. Uh, no details, uh, really in terms of more than that today. And he said anything, if it were to be built, would be years in the discussion and probably 10 to 15 years before anything would be constructed. So it's still a very long-term process. But he just wanted to make sure we were aware. And I wanted to share that with you so you had that awareness as well. Do want to provide a reminder of our schools meeting with our consultant, Dave, Dave Gaston, who is leading that discussion this Thursday evening, October 10th at 6:00 PM here in your boardroom. So at Mount Bay Road, uh, more information on our website for residents, but would encourage their attendance to find out more about process and what you've heard, uh, from Dr. Gaston and his report on what happens if we were to separate and how that process would look. And then finally, I want to just mention the Halloween for Heroes event. Uh, been very successful. Our department started that some four years ago. I can't tell you how many kids are coming through there and how many pounds of candy they are going through, but it is a tremendous amount and really a fun event. And certainly we would encourage it as a fun place for trick-or-treating for our youth. Um, it is Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. So it's, uh, six to eight o'clock at our Law Enforcement Center on Opportunity Way. And costumes are definitely encouraged. But costume or not, I would certainly encourage you to come by and take a look and see what's going on. It really has been a great event for our community. Uh, and then finally, in the, in our vote center, I just, as a reminder, I talked with Diana Mormon, our voter registrar today. Still having very good turnout. Her numbers were, like, she gave them to me, like 9,500 that have in-person voted, 2,500 mail-in and, and still others coming. They are open eight to five, uh, 4095 Ironbound Road behind the courthouse. So, uh, still leading the state in terms of, top part of the state in terms of voter turnout, but really, uh, a good operation that she's running over there as well.
Oded this morning and it was easy as cake.
I was thinking perhaps with a lot of the discussion that's come about, um, with the hurricane, it, I know we had, um, Chief Ash who came and talked to us recently, but it might, it might not be a bad idea, um, in, in the future to just, again, talk about what is the county responsibility when a storm comes through? You know, what can citizens look for to find support from us? What, what are areas that we're, we are unable to perhaps provide support? Okay, that'd be great. All right. With that, I need a motion to adjourn until 1:00 PM on October 22nd, 2024 for our business meeting. All right, Mr. Stevens, call the roll.
Ms. Knoll? Ms. Knoll? Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour? Ms. Larson?
Aye. We're adjourned.